And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray.
Can you hear me?
Councilmember, yes, we can. Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman, gotcha. Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Tracus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Is there a motion for? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The September 8th, 2020 Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this afternoon, so we will move on to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road and bridge matters this afternoon. We will move to other communications. Under Other Communications, item number one.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number two.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I may be on the delay, it sounds like, maybe. I apologize.
Item number three, Third and Seventh Districts.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number four, Fifth, First, Second, Third, Fourth, and Sixth Districts.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number five, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and the change of owner be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number six, Seventh and Third Districts.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number seven, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and the deposit agreements and subdivision plat- be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number eight, First District.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate leg- appropriate legislation. The same for item number nine as well.
So ordered.
Item number ten.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number eleven.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number fourteen, and that will be the order.
Item number fifteen, Sixth District.
See file, and county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Please read the add-ons.
Under Other Communications, item number four, Fourth District.
Councilwoman Gray, you are on mute.
Gray, Gray, Gray.
Okay, I don't have it. Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. All right, the county executive is not with us today, it doesn't look like. So we will move on to report of special committees.
Madam Chair, our first report this afternoon is the Special Committee for Oversight of COVID-19 Funding and Expenditures.
Receive, file, and the report dated September 8th, 2020 be adopted as submitted. Is there a second?
Second. Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the second report is from the Committee of the Whole.
Receive, file, and the report dated September 8th, 2020 be adopted as submitted.
Second, Tracus.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now move into the public portion forum of our meeting. As a reminder of the rules, we are proud of this forum here in St. Louis County Government, and we know that this forum can serve as a positive example to residents and other policymaking bodies in our community. We encourage every person who participates in this forum to speak with tolerance and respect towards the council, other officials in county government, and each other. As a reminder of our rules, only comments sent to council comments at stlewisco.com on the day in which the meeting is being held, at least one hour prior to the start of the meeting, will be recorded into the public record. The email must contain your name and physical address. The email must be 400 words or less, which is the equivalent of three minutes of verbal
It's just a- I think that's something that should be considered at this time, given the sheer volume of the number of the comments we have today. So with that, I guess I will formally move to suspend the rules and consider the application of Rule Five. You're on mute, Madam Chair.
So the motion is simply just to consider the application of the rule, but it's not a motion to limit at this point?
At this point, no. I think it's just a question of applying Rule Five. We can have some debate, and then we can move at that point, I think, to decide how we want to proceed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, at this point, I would entertain any discussion and dialogue pertaining to the motion that we just passed, so the application of Rule Number Five to limit the amount of time that we- a lot to count to public comments today's meeting.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Harder.
If I could ask, Diane, how many of those comments can be combined? Are they the same comments?
Very few.
Very few can be combined?
Very few. We didn't even have time to print them all off. There were so many, and this is an early meeting. But what we did do is we quickly put together 50 of the initial comments that will take us past one hour, and we can just start reading the other comments as they came in, get to whatever time you decide on.
Okay.
We had very few duplicates. Some of them have similar comments, but a lot of them expanded on those comments, so they would be individual.
And are they all within the four-minute range?
Three-minute range.
Or three-minute range?
Some of them are shorter. Yes, some of them clearly take up the 400 words, but it was very difficult with everything we had going on today to get all of these printed and looked at.
Okay.
I also want to point out, we do have an- we have a hearing today at 4:00 over another pressing matter, our Justice Health and Welfare Committee hearing. I don't know, you know, we don't have an evening meeting tonight. I don't know what everyone's schedules is, but schedules are, but that's something else to consider pertaining to the other amount of business we have today still.
I agree with Mr.- with the Councilman Tracus that we could maybe limit to two or three hours if we can start the other hearing around 5:00, 5:30. That should work, 5:30, 6:00 o'clock, and we just, we won't be able to, you know, the hearing won't be able to be as long as intended, but that's fine.
Do we know that- yeah, go ahead.
Can I just make a motion to limit it to two hours? I make a motion to limit public comment today to two hours.
Is there a second?
Well, some-
Is there a second? Was that a second, Councilwoman Gray?
No, I was just saying, I don't know, about two hours, if he said it's 17, and then we live into two, that may not be. Well, there's no sense in voting on it if we don't have the concurrence, and no one else is saying how many hours they want to look at.
Are you suggesting an amendment to the motion, Councilwoman Gray?
Well, I think we should have- well, I guess it's too late because the motion is on the floor. I was gonna say, I think there should be some more discussion, because no one else has seen how many hours they wanted to consider.
Madam Chair, I have a question. I was waiting for discussion to get there.
Councilman Fitch.
So my question would be is, if we did do two hours, and we had to cut them off at two hours, and we got in, I don't know what to pick the number, 75 of the comments, the remaining comments, would they make it into the record anyway? Would they go into the council journal, so their note, their information would be public? They would know that we would have access to that? So do you know the answer to that?
I think we can, we can make a motion that reflects that. I do think it's important that the public is still heard, and I think that making sure that those comments are entered into the record and accessible to the council members and the public beyond this meeting would be something important to do.
Sure.
And I saw Diane nodding her head, so that tells me that Diane is in agreement that that is something that we could do.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Harder.
Could I make a motion?
Go ahead.
Make a mo- make a motion that we limit the comments to two hours, that we combine comments where, when appropriately, and that everything gets entered into the record, whether they were read or not for today's meeting.
And before we second that motion, there was another motion on the floor. Do we need to rescind that? It didn't get seconded, so I don't know if that motion is still alive.
It failed for lack of a second.
It failed for lack of a second. So is there a second to Councilman Harder's motion?
I'll be the second to his motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and we have Councilwoman Days here right in time.
Thank you.
All right, with that, Madam Clerk, please read the first comment.
Yes, Madam Chair. Our first comment is from Jennifer Spencer. Why does the COVID-positive data for high schoolers in St. Louis County include 19-year-olds? This irrelevant data is being used to justify high school closures and bans on high school sports competition. Most high school seniors are 17. Some turn 18 during their senior year. Using the data of 19-year-old county residents, many of whom go to college out of town, to justify decisions for high schools is intentionally deceptive. The correct age grouping for high schoolers is 15 to 18 years old, not 15 to 19 years old. This question has been asked of Sam Page repeatedly, but he deflects. I'd like to put forth the question to the council. I request that the data for 19-year-olds be removed from the COVID-positive cases- case rates when making decisions about in-person high school attendance and high school sports. I'm certain the Public Health Department has the capability to amend this data. 60% of deaths associated with COVID in St. Louis County have been residents of long-term care facilities. Not one child in the county or in Missouri has died from COVID. Sam Page would be wise to focus on protecting the elderly in long-term care rather than penalizing kids by closing schools and banning high school athletic competition. I urge all members of this council to approve Bills 175 and 176. Sam Page should not have complete power to issue emergency mandates for an unlimited time or have sole control of $173 million of relief funds. There are no checks and balances and no representation for each district when Sam Page is making unilateral decisions that affect our children, our businesses, and our lives. Your constituents will remember your vote on these bills when you ask to be reelected by the people you serve. I would also ask that federal COVID relief funds be distributed to each district based upon its population and not according to Sam Page's preferences. Lisa Clancy, Council Rep. for District 5, voted down Bills 151 and 152 in July, giving Sam Page sole unchecked power over emergency mandates. This is a clear conflict of interest, considering that her brother, John Clancy, is Sam Page's campaign manager. From Kathy Cargill, I'm writing to you before the council meeting on Tuesday. I would like to see our high school youth athletes to be able to play all four sports competitively, so I think some authority needs to be taken away from Page. Here are my reasons. There are so many high school athletes playing around us, not increasing the numbers because they're doing it safely. Using data for youth 15 to 19 is deceiving, since most high school seniors are not 19, that's college. Then Page changed his mind and said 15 to 17-year-olds spread COVID faster than younger kids. Where's the data? The mental health of our youth is not being considered, and they are more likely to get into trouble because sports keep them active, healthy, and in line. Rules are not consistently being applied to all social activity. I've seen pictures of cross-country and track where students are clumped together, not wearing masks, and I've seen pictures of packed restaurants and casinos. This is unfair. It's sending the wrong message to our youth. Please consider taking away some power from Dr. Page and stand up for our youth and young athletes. Page won't even meet with people that oppose what he's saying. That is someone who is selfishly out for himself. From Kelly Burns, I am writing to ask for your support of Bills 175 and 176 at the council meeting on Tuesday. I believe that a checks and balance system must be instituted during this unprecedented time to ensure all constituents are being heard as our county grapples with this pandemic. I have supported and followed the mandates set forth during this pandemic as they have been handed down by Dr. Page, but the recent mandate regarding youth sports, particularly as it pertains to high school sports, is beyond my comprehension. I am reaching out to you as a mother whose daughter is participating in tennis for the first year. I have zero comprehension as to why parents are not allowed at an outside event to watch a match. Seriously, it is outside. Protesters have been closer than spectators' parents will be at the matches. St. Charles County has provided a positive example that this can be done safely without community spread. We don't have to guess if it can. We have a month's worth of data that says it can. Please consider that Dr. Page may be flawed in his decision-making and give the council the right to be included in these decisions. I thank you for your time and consideration. From Christopher Morgan, when the initial lockdown occurred, I was supportive. We didn't know what we were dealing with, and it appeared to be an appropriate precaution. However, this has all gone on long enough. It must end. If it only affected me, I would not be writing. I would live and work in St. Louis County and spend my free time and money in a neighboring county where democracy still exists. I write to you because of my children. The restrictions that have been placed on two of their greatest outlets are unacceptable. These are schools and sports. The emotional toll it is taking on them and hundreds of thousands of others in our county is unjustifiable. Sam Page says he sees numbers others don't see. Well, I see the emotional toll this takes on my children, and I assure you that there are no numbers that make that okay. Children need socialization. They need school in person. They need sports and other activities. Others will go into statistics that show the restrictions are baseless. It has already been presented to Page's representatives to little avail. What is being done to our children can't be blamed on COVID-19. The blame belongs with Sam Page, an opportunistic politician who is preying on the irrational fears and insecurities of generally well-meaning people. The blame also belongs with this council, who has let him have this power with no checks and balances. Sam Page must be reined in. He must not have sole control over the relief money. He is using it to gain obedience to his directives. Kids must get back in school. Kids must be allowed to have the outlet sports provide. It is your responsibility to protect the health and welfare of our children. COVID is little to no risk to them. The emotional toll from the stresses they are undergoing right now could long outlast anything this virus would do to them. Please act quickly. Thank you for your time. From Johanna Bodian, please vote yes for Bills 175 and 176, removing unlimited power from the Health Department and Sam Page. As citizens and taxpayers, we deserve full transparency to where the money we receive from the CARES Act is being spent. Where is this accountability? Why are Sam Page and Cora Faith Walker in charge of this now? What happened to the CARES Act board? Our kids need to be back in school and deserve to be playing youth sports like the other 75% of the youth in the state of Missouri. We've done what was asked of us to flatten the curve. The data slices being shared are not informing for solid decision-making. They are being targeted to create more fear in our community. Ask why the county health continues to lump 19-year-olds with K-12 kids, because without the population, the percentage of infection would be insignificant and go against Sam Page's narrative to keep everything shut. We demand the real data from the county health by each age, so we, the people, can make informed decisions. From Carrie Carston, I am a St. Louis County resident and taxpayer, writing to express my complete disagreement with county executive Sam Page's improper attempts to keep St. Louis County schools closed to in-person instruction indefinitely. And second, my complete disagreement with Page's ridiculous executive order last week purporting to cancel fall high school sports. In short, these actions are a gross abuse of power and are not in the best interest of students or their parents, who are all suffering emotionally, intellectually, socially, physically, and in many other ways as a result. More importantly, Page has not provided any specific data to support or justify his decisions and guidelines for youth sports. The decisions to resume in-person schooling and to have safe sports competitions should be left to the individual school districts and informed parents, and Page's actions constitute unnecessary government overreach, especially in light of the widespread opposition voiced by St. Louis County residents recently. Page is also ignoring the many pediatricians and other medical doctors who overwhelmingly support kids resuming in-person school instruction and safe sports competition. If some parents are concerned about the virus, they are free to keep their own kids out of school and sports, but the government must stop penalizing those students and families who deserve to make those informed choices for themselves. For these reasons, I strongly urge the St. Louis County Council to adopt substitute Bills- number- bill numbers 175 and 176 as a vitally necessary check and balance on the county
The following from Lisa Reed. Excuse me. The ban on most high school sports competitions is a decision not based on science or data. Please vote to limit the unilateral power of a county executive by voting for Bills 175 and 176. Despite what Sam Page says publicly about follow the science, there is no evidence that high school sports are causing the spread of COVID-19. Includes an age group that is irrelevant to high school sports. Most students in high school are 14 to 17, not 15 to 19 years old. 18 and 19-year-olds are college students, and their infection rate should not be included in the data used to make a decision for high school students. Additionally, there is no data that supports there being an increase in cases or hospitalization for 14 to 17-year-olds due to sports either in St. Louis County or in St. Charles County. Sam Page arbitrarily excluded most high school sports from competition while allowing cross-country to continue. Boys running cross-country are certainly not consistently six feet apart. They are breathing very heavily and have sweat flying off their bodies most of the time. It is inconsistent for him to allow this sport, but not others. It is not safe for athletes to play. It should not be considered safe for any athletes of any sport to play. Additionally, if it is not safe for athletes in one county to play, it should not be considered safe for athletes in any county to play. Other counties will not definitely say sports is causing COVID outbreaks and cancel their seasons. Why is St. Louis County? That concrete evidence that says our youth is being infected on the athletic field. Sam Page's decision to not allow sports is arbitrary and excessively harmful for student athletes. Additionally, athletes in other counties are being ceded by college recruiters, but St. Louis County athletes are not, potentially preventing them from receiving college scholarships. Please vote in favor of Bill 175 and 176. Sam Page has a check and a balance system over his arbitrary and unnecessarily harsh executive orders. And please consider overturning Sam Page's latest ruling against high school sports. Thank you. From Greg Tivis, first and foremost, thank you for your public service and commitment to all constituents of St. Louis County. We all appreciate the challenge you have in protecting the health and welfare of our community, people, and business. That being said, the recent developments on youth sports must be addressed. I and many others believe now what Dr. Page is doing is both irresponsible and unconstitutional. Page's pandemic and restrictions could now be considered unconstitutional as ruled- as ruled on by 914 by a federal judge against the Penn- excuse me, against the Pennsylvania governor. He is manipulating the data by including 19-year-olds in his reporting of high school or positive tests and basing his restrictions and decisions on an age group that is not playing high school sports. If he is supposed to be responsible for 1 million people, he should be able to do a simple separation of data and eliminate 19-year-olds from the high school COVID dataset. 92 St. Louis-based pediatricians, the county task force, and even the Democratic media have publicly spoken out against his restrictions and have stated that zero cases have come from high school sporting events. Why is he not only going against their advice, but also going against the CDC recommendations and the American Academy of Pediatrics that all kids need in-person education? Why is his son allowed to compete in cross-country and run for miles in a pack of heavy breathers when football players who only come into contact for a few seconds at a time are forbidden to have game? Why can high school football and soccer games be played safely in every Missouri county but not St. Louis County? Why are county bars, restaurants, casinos crowded and sports fields empty? Why is he denying the most needy kids college scholarship, athletic scholarship opportunities? No fall games mean no film and no scholarships for St. Louis County athletes. We are running out of time for fall sports competitions. Our high school students and athletes need you to vote in favor of Bills 175 and 176 to ensure that they have the same opportunities every other high school athlete in the state of Missouri have. Thank you for time. Thank you for your time, and do not hesitate to call me to discuss. Sorry. From Nick Divas. Page's pandemic restrictions are now unconstitutional, ruled on 914 by a federal judge against the Pennsylvania governor. Page is skewing the data by including 19-year-olds in his reporting of high school or positive tests and based his restrictions and decisions on an age group not playing high school sports. If he is supposed to be responsible for 1 million people, he should be able to do a simple separation of data and eliminate 19-year-olds from high school COVID dataset. 92 St. Louis-based pediatricians, the county task force, and even the Democratic media have publicly spoken out against his restrictions and have stated that zero cases have come from high school sporting events. Why is he not only going against their advice but also going against the CDC recommendations in the American Academy of Pediatrics that all kids need in-person education? Why is Page's son allowed to compete in cross-country and run for miles in a pack of heavy breathers when football players who only come into contact for a few seconds at a time are forbidden to have games? Why can high school football games be played safely in every Missouri county but not St. Louis County? Why are county bars, restaurants, and casinos crowded and football fields empty? Public is tired of Sam Page's hypocrisy. Why is he denying the most needy kids college athletic scholarship opportunities? No fall games mean no huddle film and no scholarships for St. Louis County athletes. Page is making it clear he has a sinister agenda and is manipulating data in which he says contributes to his decisions. Page's quest for power is a detriment to any political party. No one voted him into office, and it's clear that he's abusing his power and wants only to control and not to lead. He has sole authority of 173 million of emergency cares that he has yet to distribute to needy businesses after shutting them down and hires Democratic Councilwoman Lisa Clancy's brother as a campaign manager. This is a conflict of interest and further demonstrates his abuse of power. We are running out of time for fall sports competitions. Our high school students need you to vote in favor of Bills 175 and 176 to keep Page and future county executives' power in check. Excuse me. From Rachel Yost. My name is Rachel Yost of Volwen. I'd like to express my concern for what is happening in the government and policymaking of St. Louis County. Please vote yes for Bills 175 and 176, removing unlimited power from the Health Department and Sam Page. There's never been accurate data to support mandates they're putting in place, and it is to the detriment of our children. Please lift all mandates. No mask mandates, no more phases for sports. Let all children participate in volunteer sports if they want. No building capacity limits. Let spaces of business go back to full capacity. No more billing school superintendents announced that the CDC has been saying for months that all schools should be open. Special needs children especially need to have in-person learning. Bring back in-person county council meetings. We, the people, deserve to be able to sit in on our elected officials. I'd like to know where the CARES Act board went and where the oversight is for the CARES money. Why are we receiving more grant money for contract trades? $71,150 in grant funds from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services to support the Department of Health's Epidemiology and Laboratory Capacity Care Project stating the grant will commence upon contract execution and continue through March 31, 2022. We need proof that this will be necessary for another six months. Thank you for your time and for correcting the lack of checks and balances in our county government. My name is Scott Vale. I appreciate the opportunity to address the council. I'd like to address the opening of youth sports. Let me open with a few facts. First, there have been zero COVID cases in St. Louis or adjacent areas that have been spread through youth sports. Zero. This is great news and proof that protocols developed by the experts are working. Perhaps this is data that wasn't available to the county before and may make a difference in your evaluation. We all know and understand that youth participation in athletics is beneficial for their well-being. Not only do they receive important physical activity, there are a number of social and emotional benefits that our youth gain from athletics. Last, there is a growing trend of COVID spread on college campuses, likely in our 18- and 19-year-old dataset, related to uncontrolled social gathering. There have been clear examples of outbreaks on many campuses as students come back and engage in unregulated social activity. Based on these facts, it is very clear that a return of youth sports to full participation immediately is not only a good idea, it's essential. For many of them, they work all year to participate in the sports that they love. It provides them with a sense of meaning. By allowing them to participate, not only are we allowing them to follow their dreams, we are giving them a safe way to spend their free time. They are following the protocols, which we know work, both at their activities and outside of them. They know they need to stay in line in order to participate in the sports that they love. There are many reasons for them to follow the protocols when athletics are in session. If we eliminate sports, our children have plenty of free time on them instead of spending it in a controlled environment that athletics would provide. They will find other ways to fulfill their social need. This likely means increased social activity, which of course comes without any controls or restrictions. So by eliminating sports, the county is encouraging the spread of this virus. The facts are clear. The kids need to play, not only for their well-being but to help contain the spread of the virus. They are safer when they are playing. Make the right decision. Let them play. From Chris Porter. I know all of you are in a difficult situation, and thank you for listening. I only hope that these letters are read, for us, there is no reason we can't meet in person. We no longer tolerate excuses. All other counties are meeting in person. Second, please vote for Bill 175 and 176. Third, open everything back up. Let the sports teams play, the kids back in school. Lastly, why are Sam Page and Cora Faith in charge of the CARES Act money? No checks and balances. Thanks. From Libby Wilkinson. Another week goes by where the St. Louis County continues to be stubborn in their decisions and Hulu. Small business owner, the employee. Yesterday, Sam Page avoided answering the question of where he is getting his data to keep high school sports closed. Of course, he avoided the question because it doesn't exist. I'm appealing to you as the council members, please overrule Sam Page and open up sports. This is not a party politics decision. This is a decision to stand up to our kids who are being bullied. Don't you think it is interesting that Sam Page didn't close down the Cardinal Sports but closes down kids who aren't at risk? That's a bully move. County council member, you will have a part in the responsibility of the depression, self-harm, child abuse, and suicides from children and teenagers who are not able to live as they should. You know the numbers don't justify this, so do the right thing and stand up to a child bully and overrule Sam Page.
Continuing with the comments from Azora Ligon. A mind is a terrible thing to waste. On September 8th, I requested Executive Page, 1, forward me the source that sent his office workers compensation documents regarding me. The county executive office is a public governmental body within the meaning of the Sunshine Law. Executive Page, the Sunshine request I submitted requires you to submit the information. And 2, I asked Executive Page to ensure I received due process, equal protection, and fair treatment while in St. Louis County Courts. I have been deeply concerned with the administrative and judicial handling of my cases. On September 9th, by email, I received motion to dismiss from Ogletree, Deacons, and Nash. Under their certification, it stated, "The motion was electronically filed, emailed, and sent by U.S. Mail on September 10th." I was confused. Here, the lawyers appeared to be ahead of the court. In March, I was informed, due to the pandemic, cases had been rescheduled and the court would notify me by mail. On September 9th, Judge Robert Hagy was assigned and a court date was set for September 28th. Attorney Andrew Metcalf knew on September 9th, but I did not know. Judge Hagy is a judge that has not treated me fairly. On September 10th, on Casenet, the Hagy Court sent out Zoom instructions. On September 11th, 2020, I filed a motion to change judge and a motion for a continuance. I have faced openly biased judges, lawyers that specialize in tricks, and clerical staff that cannot keep an adequate docket. Any pro-say litigant would be overwhelmed in such a toxic environment. In 2015, the DOJ report on St. Louis County Court stated, "Careful consideration should be given to how lawyers are allowed to handle the docket electronically, and the courts are constitutionally deficit." The Post-Dispatch found the system is divorced from public safety. Executive Page, the silence, the violence parade you participated in on September 11th is a good thing. It just does not go far enough. Our young people need to see a system operating fairly. Our young people need to see their parents and grandparents receive due process and equal protection. Executive Page, you must lead by example. Please respond to my Sunshine request. Thank you. Next comment is from Stacy Jacobs. Please reverse the youth sports ban for the county. Please allow the parents to watch their child play their sport. This is my daughter's senior year in tennis. There is no scientific reason I should not be allowed to safely watch at a distance outside. Denying us these freedoms is not supported by science, especially for senior kids and parents. This is a critical time that we will never get back. Thank you. Next comment from Megan Hennage. Dear councilmen and councilwomen, as a St. Louis County resident and taxpayer, I fully support Bills 175 and 176 to limit the powers of the St. Louis County Executive. During this pandemic, it's evident the St. Louis County Executive has abused his executive powers and has failed to listen to the people and businesses he serves. The mandate Sam Page implemented has done nothing but divert business and funds to neighboring counties and force school-aged children to learn through a Zoom class all day in their homes with zero social interaction. Their only social interaction they may have are sports and activities, which he imposes mandates that are not supported by data. The long-term toll of these mandates will undoubtedly prove much worse than a virus all children in this county have recovered from. We are a democracy, and not one person shall have so much power over St. Louis County without the vote of a council. Thank you for your time and consideration. Next comment from Jennifer Nicole Hill. COVID was presented to citizens as an unprecedented situation. It's more a response that is truly unprecedented, one that I believe many of us regret going along with. Any parent would be willing to sign a waiver releasing liability of all parties to proceed with school and sports in a pre-COVID setting, but that doesn't seem to matter. Parents don't want these restrictions, nor do we believe they are necessary to keep us safe. I wouldn't have imagined a virus would be politicized, weaponized, and used to this extent. It's become impossible to know what to believe. There are no credible sources. We agreed as Americans to pause as experts convinced us of unprecedented circumstances. It made sense to allow hospitals to prepare. Ventilators to be manufactured, plans to be established, testing to be addressed. We've done it all, and we can't say for certainty yet or maybe ever that was actually effective. Now we're prisoners. March will never happen again because we won't allow a shutdown for anything ever again, nor should we. Does this all go away November 4th? Does COVID eventually join the ranks of flu and various other threats? Yes, it does. It already has. We went from doing the right thing to promoting fear and being used. That's right where many in power wants us to be. I'm surprised schools have so willingly become part of it all. What's more essential than school, sports, friendships to the well-being of children? Nothing. We started out noble only to end up fools. I won't even mention the economy. We need to bring local action against those who seek to use this unprecedented power to control our choices, forces our actions, and disregard our willingness to accept the inherent risk associated with life and living. Finally, when has this country ever responded to any issue or crisis this way? Never. That should matter. Next comment from Frank Axelrod. My son is a sophomore athlete at Kirkwood High School. I appreciate the challenges and thought going into policy for in-school learning and on-the-field sports. I believe it is time to take a step back into the classroom and onto the playing field. The school and sports are uniquely organized to provide a safe and contact-traceable environment for the children. More structured activities will replace the unstructured attempts at socialization that these kids need and deserve. Please consider relaxing the current restrictions to resemble the rest of our state. Thank you.
From Lori Mills. Sam Page and the entire council is not producing sufficient data to support the current ban on most sports. In some cases, like Lisa Clancy, they are even turning off comments and refusing to engage with their constituents, instead making broad statements about which kids will die and then hiding under a rock. All of this is disingenuous and an embarrassment to the St. Louis Council, to St. Louis County. There is no data because there is no link between youth sports and increased cases and especially hospitalization or death. If there were, I'm sure it would have been shouted from the rooftops to further support this lockdown. Not only are our kids being robbed of anything normal, their futures are being compromised both by the lack of in-person school and sports activities. Pediatricians are warning of weight gain, lethargy, and significant depression. I would highly suggest the council check in with local mental health providers about the numbers of teenagers needing assistance and taking meds to manage their anxiety and depression. Kids are not many adults to believe that they can make these adjustments without harm is misinformed and best and just cruel and tyrannical at worst. Moving to spring sounds like a solution only to people who have no earthly idea how college recruiting works or who don't understand the sacrifices kids have made to achieve their goals and follow their dreams. The fact that all of this disproportionately affects low-income kids seems to show how tone-deaf Sam and the entire council is on this issue. You are all setting the youth of the county back, affecting their education, their health, their futures, and why? Cases? If you cannot show actual data, it's because there isn't any. Stop hiding behind meaningless statements like, "Our demographics are different than St. Charles County." The power to control their lives for political reasons is inexcusable. Open up the schools and let them play. It's time for St. Louis County to join the rest of the state and move forward. Fear is not a strategy. And lastly, your current no spectator rule for minors children is a lawsuit waiting to happen. Even in the hospitals during the height of the COVID crisis, when there was much uncertainty, minors could have one parent present. That should be rescinded immediately, or Sam and the county should be ready for lawsuits flooding in, and that is 400 words. From Christine Hossi. I am a St. Louis County resident, registered voter, and tax-paying citizen. Dr. Sam Page is clearly abusing and overstepping his authority. Our 14-day lockdown to slow the curve has turned into a six-month house arrest of law-abiding, tax-paying, voting citizens. Dr. Sam Page has now been quoted in interviews as saying, "I know what is best for the health and safety of the citizens, and I alone have the authority." It does not matter what his level of education is or his political affiliation. Anytime one public servant believes he and he alone knows what is best for approximately 1 million residents, he has clearly lost perspective and is no longer objective. This entire process has stopped being about the public's health and well-being when Dr. Sam Page closed the parks because it was too dangerous, but piling into a filthy Walmart was not a problem. Clearly, it is about control and compliance. I get my COVID statistics directly from the CDC website, and they in no way justify the continued lockdown of healthy, law-abiding citizens. Our entire system of government has been created on checks and balances and is long overdue here in St. Louis County. It is incomprehensible this council did not step up earlier and implement legislation for oversight, but instead continued to allow one individual to be in control of $170 million in CARES funds. And I fully believe that Dr. Sam Page used and continues to use these funds as leverage to keep all county municipalities in compliance with whatever mandates he and he alone created creates. We, the people, deserve to have our rights and freedoms back. Sam Page is saving us from nothing, but rather is destroying small businesses, most of them. most recently closed permanently, Cousin Ellie's and Cousin Hugo's, crippling the local economy and hurting our children by keeping them from school and sports. Pediatricians are noting children's weight gains and alarming increases in anxiety and depression. You are fooling yourself if you think we don't drive 15 minutes down the road to shop mask-free, get a fountain soda, and eat dinner without needing a mask. Dr. Page does not now, nor did he ever know what is best for my family. It is time to end his tyrannical dictatorship and implement a system of checks and balances the people deserve. From Edward Rickard. Please vote to limit Dr. Page's authority to mandate these absurd restrictions on kids going to school and playing sports. He should not have supreme authority. This is not a monarchy. Council needs to vote to have a say and represent their district's people. And from Kelly Nelson. There once was a virus so paralyzing, it left us with so many experts advising. We stayed home for six months, our kids took the brunt, and yet we still have tried compromising. It makes sense that our kids should learn online, even if you hear us all whine. Hundreds of kids in one school, from room to room all day, it would be difficult to keep a baseline. But sports are an optional choice that parents can give their own voice. Coach is responsible for just a handful of kids. It should be a chance for our kids to rejoice. This just doesn't make sense to me. Isn't this the land of the free? If casinos and bars and sky zones are open, why can't you listen to our plea? Our kids need more than a screen. They need social time. They need a new scene. Sports can be the safer lease that they need. It's time for the county council to intervene. The government's job is not to parent my child. Just give us the data that you have compiled. Let us make the choice to participate or not. Stop keeping our kids in exile. Please stop voting along party lines. It gives everyone an itch. Really listen to what's being presented today from Councilman Fitch. No one should have this much power without much oversight. Do what's right, let them play, and no one will continue to complain. And from Sarah Clark. I am asking your intervention to restore hope in my children and consider the mental health crisis this pandemic is causing our youth. Please vote to limit the unilateral power of county executive and vote for Bills 175 and 176. This has become a mental health crisis for teens starved for action and interaction. Kids are depressed, anxious, and confused. Pediatricians report they are gaining weight at rates never seen before. A year ago, screen time and the poor social skills that resulted were huge concern. Now it's the only alternative for them, for school and recreation. Not only is this detrimental to their physical health, it's a crisis for their mental, spiritual, and academic health. The lessons learned from school groups, clubs, and teams cannot be denied. These lessons cannot be learned in other forms, nor can they be redone. These are developmental milestones that will be forever lost and cannot be repeated. I cannot begin to express the dire need to allow children and young adults to be just that, children and young adults, while they still are. The curve has flattened. The shutdown has done what it was intended to do, not overwhelm hospitals. We have more knowledge about this virus and how to protect ourselves and handle it. Two-thirds of the deaths in this country from COVID have been in nursing homes. This helps us in our approach as a community in how to protect those who need it most. Shutting down schools, businesses, and our economy as a whole with the knowledge we have now is irresponsible and wrong. For the health and well-being of an entire generation, please open up our schools and high school athletics. Please pass, excuse me, please pass the legislation to distribute the power, burden, of decision-making to more than one person. This virus is not killing teenagers. It is not. But the effects of no school, unending screen time, no positive social interaction in their school activities and sports will. When comparing the numbers of teenage suicides and deaths by COVID-19, you will see the real crisis. The clock is ticking. Please consider the psychological, physical, cognitive, and social health of an entire generation. They need your help and guidance now more than ever. Please trust that we can and will support safe practices. From Julie Graham. During these times, we need leadership that has support. Decisions should not be made in a vacuum. We need to balance health and safety as our priority, along with the needs of our small businesses, education, and extracurricular activities. Please support Councilman Fitch's bill that provides input from all of our elected leaders on these important decisions that impact our community. You represent all of the people of St. Louis County, not just your political party.
Following from Sherri Schultz. Please let our kids play youth and high school sports. There is not scientific data to support that there is a risk of spreading COVID-19. Having kids travel to places outside of the local school community to play with other kids and then coming back home is more risky, if there was a risk, and makes no sense. Consider the mental health of these athletes that need the sports for their social and physical well-being. Listen to the local doctors that have communicated about the increased weight gain and depression as part of the springtime quarantine. Consider the financial aspects of kids that are relying on scholarship money for college. Watching a kid across a river get an opportunity that these kids have worked is cruel and unfair. Leading our youth down a path of no social or physical outlet is damaging our kids. They will turn to unhealthier ways to be a teenager. This is wrong. Sam Page stating that they can play in the spring and then stating that they can play when there is a vaccine demonstrates his lack of really thinking ahead. He is in it for the short-term solution only. Let them play. Consider the long-term harm that this is doing to the kids versus the minimal risk. From Jennifer Hollander. I'm urging you to vote yes on the two bills up for a vote today. I'm not really, I'm really not urging. I am begging as a citizen, as a concerned citizen, and frankly, as a mother of four children. This pandemic has brought many challenges and some pretty scary outcomes for our country. When mid-March hit, we followed all the rules. We but we followed all the rules and complied with everything to flatten the curve for the greater good. I've watched my children, in particular, suffer tremendously from the isolation over these months. We are now into September, and it is time to let parents choose what is right for the children in terms of school and activity. I realize making public health decisions is not an easy job, and some will always be unhappy. But the data is simply not present to support further life restrictions on these children. They simply need to get back to school and back to life. At this point, the harm these restrictions are causing has a far greater negative impact than good. Let the parents and kids make decisions for themselves. This should not be dictated to us, especially when bars, casinos, Six Flags, and some other sports are allowed to go on. We can do better for St. Louis County residents. Respectfully, Jennifer Hollander. From Kathy DeHart. I just wanted to show support for Bill, I just wanted to show support of Bills 175 and 176. I believe that Dr. Page has overstepped his bounds in recommendations and mandates regarding high school sports and virtual versus in-person schooling. My kid's pediatrician was very disappointed by the virtual school-only option and was one of many who signed a letter recommending school and sports. I don't think Dr. Page is listening to experts, and I think his motives are not in the best interest of our kids. I, like many, look at the statistics all the time and do not see anything to support Page's actions. I will not cite more stats here because I know many have already sent them to you. But I need you to know, I need, excuse me, but I need you to know that Page's actions are so very detrimental to our kids for absolutely no reason. Please, please help our kids and our community. Thank you. From Melanie Broyles. It is painful to see Dr. Page making decisions and discounting the rest of the elected county council. Parents, grandparents, and county residents in general have been asking for data. Anytime data is requested, the questions are blown off, and the numbers never appear. The entire state is back to school and back to sports. The mental health issues you are personally creating are widespread. I do not know how you sleep at night. We are asking the council to demand their voices and our voices be heard. I cannot imagine being elected and having a county executive who does not even work with the county council. Kids are a bipartisan issue. Parents from all over the area need our kids back in school and back in sports. Words like indefinite and moving targets are self-serving. As a matter of fact, you do not even communicate targets. Council members, please vote to put your voice back into the equation. Please allow our schools to open. Please communicate real numbers and measures for when precautions can be lowered. Nobody operates a business, community, or even family successfully with terms like "until I say so." This is no time for "because I said so." Sincerely, Melanie Broyles. From Kara Share. On August 1st, 2020, the director of the CDC said, in quote, "It is in the public health interest," end quotes, "to reopen schools for K through 12 students." A recent study from UCLA and Stanford University found the chances of dying from COVID-19 are 1 in 19.1 million. With that in a perspective, the chances of dying from a car accident are 1 in 114. Last week, the CDC admitted that only 6% of recorded deaths, of recorded COVID deaths, actually died as a result of COVID. It is time to lift all mandates, get our kids back into school without masks. Let the kids play sports. Since Sam Page's son is allowed to participate in his sport, let us all get back to normal. There's nothing you can say to justify any of your mandates. Enough of the unwarranted fear-mongering. We are done. Thank you.
Next comment is from Carla Gruy. The ban on most high school sports competitions is just the most recent abuse of power being exercised by Sam Page. Please vote to limit his unilateral power by voting for Bills 175 and 176. Now Sam Page is discriminating against all students and athletes in St. Louis County, and I pray you will put a stop to that. All the other counties in Missouri are playing sports, and those athletes are being seen by college recruiters. Because of Sam Page, the athletes who go to school in St. Louis County will not get the scholarships they have earned. His decision places a disproportionate share of hardship against financially disadvantaged minority youth athletes. These students and their families have no other way to afford a college education. This discrimination should not be permitted at the whims of one man. Hopefully, this council will recognize that we live in a democracy. Whether you are a Republican or a Democrat on this council, you were elected to serve the constituents in your district. You cannot do that if you do not even have a vote. Despite what Sam Page says publicly about following the science, there is no evidence that high school sports are causing the spread of COVID-19, and he keeps citing an age group that is irrelevant to high school sports. Most students starting high school are 14 to 17, not 15 to 19. Additionally, the newest recommendations tell young people not to get tested unless they have symptoms. So if you take out all the asymptomatic people who were previously being tested, of course, the positive percentage will be higher. There has been no increase in cases or hospitalizations in the age group of high school students 14 to 17. I have two high school students suffering needlessly on so many levels. Please vote in favor of Bill 175 and 176 so that you have the opportunity to use your own mind to interpret the relevant facts and represent the best interest of your district residents. Next comment is from Jamie Seacrest. I'm a father of two children, and I suffer from an accelerated form of ALS. As a result, I am considered at high risk for COVID-19. I continue to see people reference that restrictions need to be in place because what if that child brings it home to their grandparents or those at risk? Well, I can safely say that you do not need to shut down our day-to-day lives to protect me as I will determine on my own where I should and should not go. My wife is a nurse manager at a local hospital. She has seen what this virus can do. With that said, we chose to allow our kids to do in-person schooling when that opens up because we feel safe to do so. My daughter, who is 14, is an avid golfer who has played many tournaments locally as well as a national tournament this summer. Every tournament had precautions in place as golf is one of the easiest sports to social distance. Not a single problem arose at any event, and I was able to be there for every tournament watching from the cart path. Yesterday, she played her first high school event and first varsity event as a freshman. Yesterday, she won medalist honors, which is for low score, for the match, and her team won. Yesterday, I was unable to watch my daughter achieve multiple milestones in her young life. Yesterday, my daughter was unable to experience milestones with her parents present. We can't get that back now. All this on a golf course, which is naturally social-distanced. From my understanding, the rules that came in place last week were too ambiguous. As a result, the suburban conference schools are not sure how to interpret your spectator rules. It's time to ease the restrictions. I don't need my attempt taken outside to watch. I won't be anywhere near the kids, just like every junior golf event. Let the conferences limit the spectators if they need to, but ease your control over the community. I ask you, please address as a group and not as an individual. I value one of the only activities I can comfortably do, that is to watch my daughter play golf. Next comment is from Angela Montgomery. The pandemic policies in the beginning were taken with good intention, but they have increasingly become overreaching and arbitrary with no endgame plan in sight. There is no question that this country has faced and will face emergencies of every sort. But the solution to a national crisis can never be permitted to supersede the commitment to individual liberty and personal well-being that stands as the foundation of the American experiment. It is undemocratic to have emergency mandates imposed on the public by one person. It should be decided by a majority rule vote of the county council members. Please support Bills 175 and 176 proposed by Tim Fitch of District 3 and Mark Carter of District 7 to add checks and balances to the county council. Next comment is from Rebecca DeMargal. I am writing today to respectfully ask you to reconsider your position on allowing our public school children Zoom sports competition. The latest COVID data does not support keeping the children from the classroom or sports fields. We have proven over the last several months that these events can safely proceed using proper masking, social distancing, and sanitizing procedures. I am at home this morning with my 7th and 10th graders, both students in the Webster Grove School District, as the fourth week of virtual learning is underway. My high achieving, motivated, and generally positive kids have experienced frustration, anxiety, and isolation every day of this virtual learning experiment. I believe wholeheartedly that this frustration, anxiety, and isolation is potentially much more damaging to their well-being than is their risk of contracting and becoming ill with COVID-19 at school or on the playing field. We must stop living in fear of COVID-19 and consider instead the short-term and long-term mental health of our children. Thank you. Next comment is from Richard Francisco. To Sam Page and the county council, pay close attention to what the citizens of St. Louis County are telling you this very moment. County Council, you've permitted Sam Page to run roughshod over us all. Sam Page, your order shutting schools and keeping kids off sports fields are unacceptable to us. Instead of stating transparency in government on your website, state reckless, deceitful, and opaque. You've twisted what your medical task force has said to justify your lockdown orders. You cite misleading data or provide no facts at all. You ignore what the CDC states on the imperative of returning children to school. You ignore common sense while the rest of Missouri smartly returns kids to schools. Your actions will be more harmful to our children's mental, emotional, social, and physical well-being than COVID ever could be. We already have 173 million reasons to distrust you, given your lack of transparency with the federal CARES relief money, which could have been used to safely open schools. The citizens of this county reject your words and deeds, and we are calling you for what you are, a liar and coward. We demand these restrictive schools and sports orders be rescinded immediately, and we will not stop until you and the others on this council that support you are voted out. You can't hide behind a fake private privacy property sign and Creve Court police for long. This is democracy in action, Sam Page. Take note of it.
From Nancy Rorden. I am appealing to the county council to provide their residents with a voice in St. Louis County. Many of us feel that one person should not speak for almost 1 million people. The job is too big for one person. The county executive position was not meant to be this powerful. We have elected you, our representatives, to be our voice. We trust you. How can we have a voice if the council continues to defer their responsibility to the county executive? Please act immediately to honor that responsibility and trust. We need your representation. We need your checks and balances. Thank you. From Kimberly Stevens. For the past six months, interim county executive Sam Page has been allowed to unilaterally make decisions that ultimately affect every single resident of St. Louis County. We have watched as he has shut down our businesses, churches, schools, and youth sports, all in the name of flattening the curve. Interim Page seems to take great pleasure in making decisions based strictly on his own personal beliefs. He refuses to listen to his own task force and will not provide data to back up any of his decisions. Interim Page continues to claim that there are many cases tied to youth sports despite being unable to provide contact tracing data. When asked at his own press conference as to why schools and sports in St. Charles County are working, he has no response other than he is taking a different approach. He continues to skirt any question that doesn't fit his personal agenda. I would like to strongly encourage the county council to pass bills 175 and 176. It is absolutely imperative that our interim county executive no longer be allowed to make unfounded and indefinite executive orders with zero facts, our statistical data to back them up. Government only functions properly when there is a system of checks and balances, something interim county executive clearly knows nothing about. It is time for his tyrannical reign on our county to come to an end. One unelected county official should not be allowed complete and total control. It is the job of our government officials to look out for the best interests of all county residents. Unfortunately, it has become crystal clear to all that interim Page is only interested in doing what serves his personal political agenda. Once again, I strongly encourage the council to pass bills 175 and 176. From Kate Han. I am writing in support of Councilman Fitch's bill that provides input from all of our elected leaders on major decisions impacting the community. One man or woman should not have all the power to make decisions for the community they represent. For one person to recommend no in-person learning and to mandate no high school sports is insane and beyond ridiculous. Stop counting 19-year-olds in the supposed data you have used to handicap our children in learning and physical activity. There are not 19-year-olds in high school. By including 19-year-old in the data, which is keeping our high school kids off the courts or fields, you are including every college kid who just had to be tested in July and August before going to college. How can any of this be justified, which which communities like St. Charles making it work with kids in person, learning, and competing in sports? Now is the time to change the mentality. We closed down everything for many weeks to flatten the curve. That was the goal. It's been accomplished. Now move forward. Listen to your constituents. Let them go to school. Let them play. From Kelly Bryant. I feel that you have taken all rights away for my child and I. These kids are already struggling with online schooling and no socialization. They are becoming hermits. My child spends 3.5 hours on a computer for class and then another two hours for homework. This is not good for a high schooler or any child. I feel that I should be the one making the decision on my child. We have already lost so much, and I am tired of watching my children struggle. Let's get these kids back into a routine and off the computers. And from Richard Roden. It is my understanding that Tim Fitch has introduced two bills that would give the county council oversight of the county executive's decisions during a pandemic. This is absolutely necessary, as no one person should have the authority to make decisions that will affect the economy and well-being of all county residents without any checks and balances on that authority. The idea that the county executive can place mandates on citizens with no parameters is appalling. The idea that the county executive can declare that certain businesses must close and certain activities are forbidden or restricted indefinitely is appalling. I submit that the guidelines proposed in bills 175 and 176 are reasonable and necessary, and I would ask that the council place these restrictions on the county executive as soon as possible.
And in advance, please forgive me if I mispronounced this last name. Following from Stephanie Herbertzek. I hope I got that right. Excuse me. I'm writing on to advocate for the youth ice hockey community. Ice hockey is currently classified as a high contact sport, while it is considered a moderate contact sport for adults. I would like you to take a few things into consideration. One, hockey players are covered head to toe in equipment, in parentheses, shoulder and leg pads, pants, socks, undershirt, jersey, gloves, neck guard, helmet, and mouthguard, in parentheses. All that equipment is a requirement. Number two, youth hockey ages 14 and under is not allowed to check or have any aggressive contact with other players. Number three, youth hockey lines change every 90 seconds during gameplay. Players are never around one another for more than 90 seconds at a time. Number four, hockey clubs have been very stringent with safety protocols, including a registered nurse doing health screenings of anyone entering the ring, daily temperature checks, no use of locker rooms, in parentheses, dressed at home or in the parking lot, in parentheses, minimal parents allowed in and immediately leaving the rink upon the completion of competition or practice. I'm asking for youth hockey to be reclassified as a moderate risk due to the reasons above. Our kids have been very diligent and have worked very hard to stay healthy and safe. We ask that they be given the opportunity to participate in safe competition. Thank you. From Lisa Philkins. Please read this into the record for today's meeting. I think the following quote from Nelson Mandela says it best, end quote. "Sports has the power to change the world," end quote. "It has the power to inspire. It has the power to unite people in a way little else does. It speaks to the youth in a language they understand. Sports can create hope where there was only once despair. It is more powerful than governments and breaking down racial barriers. It laughs in the face of all types of discrimination. Sports is the game of lovers," end quote. We, the parents, should be able to decide what is best for our children. Look at the scientific data. Read it for what it is. All of you who sit there and make mandates for children without valid data and sources should be ashamed of yourselves. And to Dr. or to Mr. Page specifically, state yesterday in your press conference that you are, end quote, "too busy," end quote, "to attend a task for me task force meeting on this subject." Shame on you. Do you remember you represent the entire population of St. Louis County? Adopt bills number 175 and 176. Let them play. From John Sabo. I wanted to reach out to convey my concern about the online instruction and how awful it is for my son, Michael. Michael attends Eureka High School and is a sophomore. Now, some background on Michael. We had to hold him back a year to repeat kindergarten. He has an IPE and is on this online school is so hard for him. He has struggled through school, but seemed to hit his stride his freshman year and was able to get a 3.0. I was very proud of him. I knew Eureka would be good for him based on my other two kids' success. I know this COVID thing had put everyone in a tailspin, but right now he is struggling so bad. He told the he told the other day he wished he could be back to school and learn in person to get his flex time back. He needs that so badly. He is a visual learner. The flex time was awesome for him, especially for a kid who struggles. There is no reason the students can't can't wear masks and attend school in person. This is getting ridiculous. The kids need to get back in-person classes. Josh, following from Josh Share, sorry. 15 days to flatten the curve. 15 days so our hospitals are not overrun. Well, here we are, seven months later. The curve is so flat, we can't see it. Hospitals are empty. Stop talking about COVID cases. Talk about hospitalizations and deaths. You won't because it doesn't fit your narrative. It is evident now more than ever that Sam Page's mandates are nothing more than a fear mongering dictatorship with the sole purpose to manipulate an election. Even though a few sheep have brought into your bought into your rhetoric, there are not enough to keep you in office. 49 days, Sam Page. 49 days. From Kelly Johnston. I'm sorry, from Kelly Johnson and Kristin Nelson, they're essentially the same same wording in the email. The naivety of Lisa Clancy's tweet yesterday shows the willful ignorance and/or total incompetence guiding the return to school sports, school sports mandates. Are you truly unaware that six plus month, six plus months of worldwide data, not to mention the recommendations over 100 local pediatric pediatric specialists, clearly show the kids 19 and under have a virtually non-existent risk of death or serious disease from COVID-19? Lisa asks, which parents do we want to sacrifice their children to have data? We already have data. Is she incapable of reading it or unwilling to follow it? The only one performing experimental sacrifice here is Sam Page, and he must be stopped. The virus has not caused one death in Missouri child, 0 to 19 years of age. But Sam Page is unilaterally killing the souls, dreams, physical and mental health of thousands. I urge the council members to prioritize the recommendations of pediatricians over one politician. Follow data over a dictator and approve the resolution to limit Sam Page's unilateral politically motivated power. Our kids' well-being is most certainly on the line, but it is not from a virus.
The next comment is from Joanna Pellegrini. Public servants, my name is Joanna Pellegrini. I live and pay taxes in St. Louis County. Blink twice if Sam Page is holding your vote ransom with the CARES money he owes. It's the only rational conclusion that would justify the actions of Kelly Dunaway causing her constituents in Chesterfield to lose millions of dollars in revenue the businesses generate as the athletic complex hosts summer baseball, football, and soccer leagues and tournaments. Or for Lisa Clancy, Rida Days, or Rochelle Walton Gray, who serve many minority and/or underprivileged families. The families who, without question, have suffered the burden of COVID's economic hardships more than anyone. You will extinguish a young person's dream of attending college in the fall, excuse me, as an athletic scholarship was their only means to afford college, which won't exist without a sports season to showcase their talent and years of hard work. Why aren't you being transparent? Break the numbers down by single age groups. Why are college-age kids included in the youth sports numbers? Are you trying to skew the numbers? Why are you not fighting for the children in your communities? My kids will be fine, though. We have hired private coaches and trainers. We have taken weeks off work, spent thousands of dollars to travel to other counties and states to let our kids play the sports they love. You should see them, such smiles, so full of life. It's heartwarming, all without a single case of COVID. We can afford to circumvent your silly system, but what about those that can't? What will you say to them? What can you say? You should witness the great lengths the coaches of youth sports have gone through to keep sports safe. It's a touching testament to their devotion to the kids. Truly, you should go to any sporting venue. Have you? Lisa, recognize your blatant conflict of interest as your brother is Sam Page's campaign manager and step down as the chairperson of the county council immediately. Do the right thing for St. Louis County kids. Vote yes on bills 175 and 176. There is no data to support your fear-based decisions. COVID is not being spread at youth sporting events. And a quote from Marie Curie. Nothing in life is to be feared, it is only to be understood. Now is the time to understand more, so we may fear less. Thank you. The next comment is from Megan Schwartz, Lauren Howes, Karen Smith, Sean Hayes, Chris Hayes, Katie Geary, and Rob Geary. Please read this letter in full. It does not matter if it is duplicated by others. If we were there in person, each of us would have three minutes to communicate this information, and it would not matter if it was repetitive. Give each citizen their right to be heard. This request is for you to end the countywide mandate to wear masks, to lift capacity limits, end social distancing orders, end virtual education, restore youth sports, and vote yes on bills 175 and 176 today. We, as rational, logical adult citizens, can decide for ourselves appropriate actions to take to keep ourselves and our community healthy. This virus has caused the death of 0.07% of people in our county. While each person lost is a tragedy, this number simply does not justify the type of mandates in place. We do not need mandates restricting our freedoms when our hospitals are not overrun, and we have flattened the curve as you originally asked. Lift all mandates today and allow St. Louis County to heal from the hardships the mandates have caused. Thank you. Next comment is from John Conroy. Please consider the data and science behind transmission of COVID-19 between youth during athletic events. There are no documented traceable transmissions of the virus between athletes and competition I am aware of. After eight-plus months of COVID-19 in Missouri, there have been zero youth fatalities in the state. The mortality rate is 0%. He references a website at this point. Science Magazine has determined the most at-risk cohort of any age are the obese with a BMI over 30. We need to do everything in our power to help our children improve their immunity through athletics. Again, he references a website. Let the children play with safety precautions as per guidelines, as they are allowed to do in 113 of the 114 Missouri counties. Many children rely on athletic scholarships to even attend college. HBCUs come to mind. Why would St. Louis County put these children in a pause in a position they cannot compete for opportunities if there exists little to no data showing infection transmission? Thank you. Next comment is from Michelle De Salvo. Sam Page, we are bringing you what you are doing to students and student athletes to a lot of people's attention. You are abusing your authority. There is a letter that was posted on Facebook under Forest Park Pets. 92 pediatricians said since August 30th that kids need to be back in school and playing sports. They are suffering depression at an alarming rate. I would think that a pediatrician would know a lot more about this than an anesthesiologist. Sam Page is saying in interviews that he knows what is best for the health and safety of citizens and not listening or consulting these pediatricians. It sounds to me that he has his own agenda, and people have started to talk and get the word out that not only Sam Page, but this council doesn't have the best interest of our kids, and that you all are okay with these alarming rates of depression and many other mental issues that these pediatricians are seeing. I am completely shocked to learn that this council did not implement oversight and allowed Sam Page to have control over 170-plus million dollars in the CARES Act. What is wrong with you people? Also, it's so nice that you had four police officers blocking Sam Page's street Sunday night and put a sign up saying private property. If Creve Court maintains that street, it's not private and you infringed on their rights. I hope someone sues you for it. People are sick of Sam Page's arrogance. I hope people start seeing this, and it's starting to make the news. This county is losing millions of dollars because of Sam Page. I am no longer shopping in the county. I go to 15 minutes. I go 15 minutes over the river to shop, eat out, and my child will be playing volleyball over in St. Charles. You will continue to see this from so many citizens of St. Louis County. So you can just keep allowing this dictator to run the show as he sees fit with no input from the task force, or get involved and stop letting him run St. Louis County into the ground, because then that is on you. There is another election when it comes time for people to either vote you all back in or not. I can tell you, this board will not get my vote when it I can tell you, this board will not get my vote when it's your time to be re-elected. Never. Next comment is from Liz Laflaine. As a concerned parent, I feel it is necessary to point out that my problem with this overreaching mandate is not about sports. It is about concern for my teens and all others. Our morale, commitment, mental health, and future is significantly affected by this action. My daughter has practiced field hockey at her school for five weeks. Small groups, temperature checks, gaiters worn, you name it. No one has gotten sick as a result. Other private schools are in the same situation. And now she and all the other athletes are told this is not enough. Some secret data only available to the Department of Health and County Executive is enough to stop St. Louis County from joining the rest of the state participating in youth sports. Don't call parents an interest group and patronize us with your claims of understanding our frustration. Don't claim your message is protecting our youth when you ignore the facts that youth sports and games in a controlled environment has not spread COVID. Don't say most of the country has stopped youth sports games. They have not. And don't count on our vote in the election. You have overstepped your bounds, and you are not welcome to make decisions. Let our kids play. Next comment is from Lindsey Burns. As a resident of St. Louis County, I demand transparency about the data you are using to justify the restrictions currently imposed on moderate-to-high-impact high school sports. I have repeatedly requested specific data related to the 14- to 18-age group, both transmission rates and hospitalizations, since this is the information you're using to persecute those athletes in that age group. Moreover, I have requested information regarding contact tracing. Specifically, how many COVID cases have been unequivocally linked to the playing of sport? How many of those cases have resulted in hospitalization? I have yet to receive said data, nor have I received a response from your office. It is not enough to make general statement that 15- to 19-year-olds are spreading COVID or that there have been many cases. You must present facts. Your very own COVID website reveals that the 10- to 19-age group has a rate of transmission of 1.9 per 100,000 cases, making it one of the lowest groups, second only to the 0- to 9 age group. Substance abuse, depression, anxiety, self-harm, and suicide rates are all increasing at a much more dramatic rate. Have you also kept track of the mental health hospitalizations for the 15- to 19-age group? I would guess that they are far outpacing the COVID hospitalizations for that age group. The benefits of competition for high schoolers, both physical and mental, should not be ignored. It is my job as a parent to confer with our pediatrician and decide if the benefits of playing sports outweigh the risks for my child. We have decided that the benefits absolutely outweigh the risks in this case. I do not need or want your interference in this matter. Your child has an opportunity to compete. My child deserves the same opportunity. And from Emily Villa. I am writing regarding recent restrictions preventing certain high school athletics. I have a master's in physical therapy. For the sake of argument, let's create a hypothetical situation. Based on acute and long-term injuries seen in distance runners, I may recommend that your son discontinue participation on the cross-country team. At that point, it would be a conversation your family should have, determining whether the risk outweighs the reward. What you decide as a loving father would undoubtedly be in the best interest of your son. And I should say that this was directed at Dr. Page. In light of this, please trust me and my husband, along with thousands of other St. Louis County parents, to make the same decisions for our children. Undoubtedly, there will be parents who decide that now is not the time to engage in competitive sports, and hopefully that's the right decision for their child. For others, parents will decide that return to competition is appropriate. The bottom line, with all due respect, is this simply isn't your call to make. I appreciate that restrictions on youth sports are an attempt to limit the spread of the virus. While this is admirable, it is not supported by the data. The fact is that less than 1% of teens are hospitalized. Of course, transmission is of concern, but this is why we are adhering to mask-wearing, quarantining, and social distancing. There will undoubtedly be cases that arise amongst teen athletes, but high school sports are not to be blamed for the 20% rise in cases among this age group. By continuing to restrict sports, you are putting these athletes at risk for so many other well-documented issues. Our family has deep roots in St. Louis, and we respect all levels of government. We are acutely aware of, especially now, the privilege of a democratic society. It is our right for our voices to be heard. I respectfully ask you to carefully examine whether it is your right to continue making decisions for our children. This is a slippery slope you're on. Just like you may disagree with my hypothetical recommendation as a physical therapist pertaining to your son, I would like to disagree with you, County Executive. I don't believe you are making the right decision for my children. Thank you for your time, and although I disagree with you, thank you for your service to St. Louis County. From Matt Siegel. We are in unprecedented times. Every day is a new challenge with new issues and obstacles to address. During these times, we need leadership that has support. Decisions should not be made in a vacuum. We need to balance health and safety as our priority, along with the needs of our businesses, education, and extracurricular activities. Please support bills 175 and 176 that provides input from all of our elected leaders on these important decisions that impact our community. From Donna Anderson. Please reevaluate the decision to restrict high school sports after removing the 19-year-olds from your data. Very few 19-year-olds are still in high school, and they should not be in your sample for making this decision. Please share contact tracing results that demonstrate youth sports are responsible for infections. Please listen to the medical experts that are supposed to be advising you. And please explain why every other county in Missouri can play, but St. Louis is too dangerous. And from Laura Zink. Please vote in favor of bills 175 and 176. The county executive should not have unchecked power. No one should, no matter your political party. One person should not make decisions for the entire county. I appreciate the spring lockdown, but we have to live with the virus. The economy and our community cannot sustain life this way. There has to be a balance of safety and sound economic decisions. In addition, children shouldn't bear the worst of it. Just because they don't create revenue doesn't mean they should pay the price for everything. Youth sports organizations are going out of business because of this. Mental health is a huge problem already, and Sam Page is making it worse. Why are casinos open that attract the highest-risk folks when high school sports aren't? The same group of people can go to bars and restaurants and casinos, but not a high school soccer game. Mask up, pass these bills, and make common sense rules. And by the way, St. Charles and other areas are benefiting from sports being moved out there. And from Jill Guilfoyle. I plead for you to allow our kids to play sports, band, cheerlead, and participate in dance team. Your statistics break down to one case per 15- to 19-year-olds and include kids that graduated in 2019 and 2020. This decree is killing our kids, who are already suffering from anxiety and depression due to this unfair isolation. The cases are not coming from kids. Show us the data. Listen to the St. Louis Pandemic Task Force. Listen to the pediatricians.
Excuse me. From Joanna Browning. It is with the utmost respect that I ask you to please reconsider the restrictions Dr. Page has put in place for youth sports. I understand the difficult decisions that have had to be made as part of this pandemic, but to restrict the youth from being outside, engaging in exercise, and playing the sports they love makes zero sense to me. The data is clear. The children are not the ones spreading and affected by this virus. Pediatricians have come out in opposition to your restrictions. Private schools have been in place for weeks with limited outbreak. Please give our children a chance to recover from the mental and emotional trauma this shutdown has put on them. They need to be outside, playing in a safe manner. Dr. Page has overstretched his reach, and it needs to end today. Please allow us, as parents, choose what we feel is best for our children. Thank you, Joanna Browning. From Lindsey Offerman. Our address above shows that we live in Jefferson County. But we send our children a private school in St. Louis County. My high school student athletes could be playing if they went to our local public school. They also play club sports that are based in St. Louis County. But they could just choose to play all games outside county line. How does that make sense with your rules if there are plenty of loopholes to play games outside the county? Club sports have done this since June. Our high school teams have been practicing since August 10, and there has been no sports transmission of COVID-19 in any of these sports practices. We, as parents, should have the right to choose if we assume the risk of our kids to play sports. If the risk is too great for some, they can opt not to play. However, you are punishing these athletes by not giving them the chance to play games. Practice is not enough. They need to be able to play games. For the last six-plus months, we have abided by the rules you have set for St. Louis County. In parentheses, also where I work. In parentheses. We have listened and followed through on restrictions, mask mandates, shutdowns, et cetera. At this point, however, the data no longer supports these extreme restrictions in relation to the children. The mental health of our kids is at risk, and we, as parents, shouldn't stand for this anymore. Kids should be able to be back in school where they can properly learn, and the kids should be able to play sports. We implore you to do the right thing. Please give these kids a chance to play. Make the decision ours and not yours. Respectfully, Lindsey Offerman. From Tricia Roche. I'm a parent of two children, both that both attend high school and participate in high school sports, and also play club sports in St. Louis County. My oldest is a senior, and the youngest is a freshman. They have been prohibited from playing games by your orders. Their spring was equally affected, so this has been a long few months. I'm sure by now you have seen the data and reports from medical professionals that show very low possibility of transmission through youth sports, especially while extra precautions are being followed. I also have issue with the inclusion of 19-year-olds as high school. High school is generally 14 to 18 years of age. I'm asking you, please, lift these rules. I'm aware of the bills being proposed this week, bills 175 and 176, one of which would allow taking back control of these decisions so that one person doesn't have the ultimate power to support these so that the children that need youth sports can go back to what they love. Sports, to some of these kids, is the best part of their life. So I hate to see the only great part of their life being stripped from them. My senior has the opportunity to play in college with the lack of games in spring, and now this has poorly affected those opportunities. Please, please, let them play. Thank you. From Becky Hurdle. I have children at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. Please keep our children 100% virtual. It will create the most consistency for our children. It will keep students with the same teachers, their peers, from their school, and most of all, healthy. I have been extremely disappointed by middle and high school students and parents' lack of responsibility during this pandemic. In my neighborhood, there have been high school students meeting in large numbers at the park. I counted at least 40 kids not socially distancing. I understand the importance of sports. It's ridiculous to put sports above education. All sports in-person activities should not be happening at any level until we are back at school. I also think that sports are the only activity that's getting any attention for mental health, and other clubs are being forgotten about. Thank you, Sam Page, for doing what is right and healthy for our children. You are doing a great job. Sincerely, Rebecca Hurdle.
Next comment is from Marla Fastinow. I would like to start by addressing the council members. I am asking you to support the bills that are being introduced today that will help rein in the powers of our county executive. No individual should have sole authority on so many critical decisions that are being made on behalf of our community, from schools to businesses to our children's mental health, without the backing of a governing body. Each of you represent your constituents, and you have the duty to represent their voices. To Dr. Page, I don't need you to decide what is in the best interest of my child. I don't need you to make decisions for me that you feel are keeping her safe. CDC Director Robert Redfield candidly discussed how school closures are affecting our children. To quote him, "We are seeing sadly far greater suicides now than deaths from COVID." We're seeing far greater deaths from drug overdose that are above access that we had as background. I'm sorry. We're seeing far greater deaths from drug overdose that are above access that we had as background than we are seeing deaths from COVID. You are locking down the one age group that handles this virus better than anyone. Hospitalizations of our teens in the area isn't happening. Stop referring to data and show us data. I firmly believe if you had statistically accurate data to support your cause, you would be plastering it everywhere. I'm sorry to hear that you don't have time to meet with the St. Louis Sports Medicine COVID-19 Task Force, yet you have the time to do radio interviews. I'm sorry that you now refer to them as just another advisory group because you want to pick and choose which of their recommendations you follow. I'm sorry you refuse to listen to the 95 pediatricians in the community advocating for our children to be back to school and sports. In closing, I'd like to reference Lisa Clancy's pinned tweet, which is so fitting right now. Change is hard. Change requires different choices, different decisions, different actions. Change requires new effort, new relationships, new habits. Change requires letting go of the known and wading through the unfamiliar found in the dark of the unknown. Change requires admitting that what we've done, what we've been doing up to this point, isn't working, and that it's time to try something else. Is that something we can admit? Thank you for supporting our case, Councilperson Clancy. It's time for a change. Let them play. Next comment is from Timothy Reynolds. Please vote yes for bills 175 and 176. We need to remove unlimited power from the Health Department and Sam Page. Sam Page is not an elected official. Please lift all mandates. No mask mandates, no more phases for sports, and let all children participate in volunteer sports if they want. I know what is best for my family. Is it ironic that high school children can still participate in cross-country? Bring back in-person county council meetings. Where is all the money we received from the CARES Act spent? We demand council oversight on CARES Act spending. Cancel recommendation to authorize amendment to a contract originally authorized by ordinance number 27,592 for outside counsel with Lewis Rice LLC. What is this? Why would St. Louis County residents need to fund attorneys to work against themselves? Let them play. Next comment is from Brittany Hartlidge. County Council and dictator Sam Page, this request is for you to end the countywide mandate to wear masks, to lift capacity limits, and end social distancing orders now. Get children back in school and allow them to play sports. We, as rational, logical adult citizens, can decide for ourselves appropriate actions to take to keep ourselves and our community healthy. This virus has caused the death of 0.07% of people in our county. While each person lost is a tragedy, this number simply does not justify the type of mandates in place. These tyrannical mandates are not warranted. They are a direct violation of our constitutional rights. And we, the people, have had enough. We will not consent. We are not in a pandemic. In fact, there never was one. You continue to push this false narrative, and you need to stop now. You dodge questions. You won't meet with the task force you set in place. You aren't truthful about the data. Sam Page, you are a disgrace full of corruption and funded by George Soros. I fully support and say yes to bills 175 and 176 that are being proposed. Sam Page should never have this much power over St. Louis County, and he is holding the residents hostage. His behavior is abhorrent and intolerable. We, the people, have spoken, and his reign will end in November when we get rid of corruption and elect Paul Berry III. We do not need mandates restricting our freedoms when our hospitals are not overrun, and we have flattened the curve as you. We do not need mandates restricting our freedoms when our hospitals are not overrun, and we have flattened the curve as you originally asked. Lift all mandates today and allow St. Louis County to heal from the hardships your mandates have caused. A true patriot that loves America, not tyranny. Next comment is from Jennifer Yocans. I am writing to support the efforts to allow high school sports to resume in the county with restrictions. The senior players are missing their opportunities that others have in neighboring communities for scholarship opportunities, as well as seniors who have played all through high school, and this is their last opportunity for high school sports. I hope you reconsider. Next comment is from Amber Mueller. I am a mother to three kids in county public schools. I am asking that you advocate for and push for the reopening of schools immediately. We parents are watching the children deteriorate, deteriorate mentally, socially, and physically. They are receiving a substandard education and educational experience. With new restrictions on sports, no thanks to Sam Page, they continue to have less and less healthy outlets for exercise, stress relief, and socialization. Revenue is also going out the door to neighboring counties, as we spend our money in open sport counties. We know that the measurements used to determine safe reopening of our schools and sports are unrealistic and skewed. The infection rate is below the annual flu. We have obviously flattened the curve, and we cannot expect to eradicate this virus before we go back to life. It is just not possible, nor is it necessary. By continuing to isolate unnecessarily, we are actually compromising our health and immunity to viruses and disease. If people want to stay at home or attend school virtually, no one is taking that right away from them. The harm and damage being done to our children and families is immeasurable. The gap for at-risk children is becoming canyon-sized. That's on you. Kids need kids. Kids need school. Kids need a return to normal living. Please help advocate for the children. They need you. Also, the people you work for want you to vote yes on bills 175 and 176. Please stop the madness of Page ruling everyone's lives according to his own skewed data and political gains. And from Amy Eichmann. I am writing today in support of ending all draconian mandates. The state of emergency must end, as the numbers do not justify unconstitutional measures and are causing more harm than good. Effective public policy demands a risk-benefit calculation. Please consult with Jim Talent, who has written extensively on this subject. You are obviously unfamiliar with the concept, and he is an expert with decades of experience. Seek help. You obviously need it. Give our special needs kids the support they must have. Honor ADA exemptions. Allow our children to exercise and socialize in sports activities for the preservation of their mental health and well-being. Stop wasting CARES Act funding on special pet projects and political cronies, and use it for its intended purpose, which includes educating, assisting, and caring for the high-risk group. Keep, keeping small businesses from failing and supporting those who are unemployed due to COVID. You are wasting money on things that are unnecessary and withholding money from those who need it. Keep your promise, promise of transparency and share the data you have. Be honest. Open up this council to in-person meetings and stop making excuses for hiding from your constituents. Support bills 175 and 176 to return oversight and responsibility to the council. Enough is enough. From Richard Plattner. It is my belief that Dr. Sam Page is overstepping his authority to have sole control over canceling of youth sports. It is my expectation that the county council will approve 175 and 176 to have the council vote to approve any such orders from Dr. Sam Page in the future. No single person should have sole authority on this issue. It is beyond frustrating to see this happen. The people of St. Louis County are beyond frustrated by these actions. I urge all on the St. Louis County to vote for 175 and 176. From Kathleen Giannino. Dear Dr. Page and council members, for six months, I have watched every press conference, listened to every interview, and read every article concerning Dr. Page and his restrictions on COVID. As the parent of 14 and 15-year-old student athletes and a county resident, I have had a vested interest in how we respond to COVID. It's very understanding of the measures taken about this virus, as we have learned more about who it impacts. My patience has dwindled. You have seen the data and reports from medical professionals that show very low possibility of transmission through youth sports, especially while extra precautions are being followed. Truthfully, there is no better contact tracing system than that which has been implemented by most youth sports organizations. They know who was in their facility and when, and have been able to head off widespread outbreaks faster than the county could ever hope to. The data is valid, as kids have been playing in every other county since. May, my daughter, daughters included. Oh wait, in every other county since May, my daughters included, and there has been little transmission. I also have issue with the issue with the inclusion of 19-year-olds as high schoolers. High school is generally 14 to 18 years of age. I am asking you to please do what you can to not allow these prohibitions to continue. I am aware of the bills being proposed this week, 175 to 176. One of which would allow taking back control of these decisions, so that one person doesn't have ultimate power to make important decisions. He has provided no data point or goal for when restrictions can and will be lifted, because he doesn't have to. He is left completely unchecked. While casinos, bars, and amusement parks operate, our children are suffering. We as parents should be able to decide what is best for our children. You should not strip our children of the chance you are allowing your child. Adopt bills numbers 175 and 176. Let them play. And from Chris Keel. This attack on our children's mental health must be stopped. Our kids are suffering being away from kids and now athletics. Dr. Page continues to use statistics to justify his ridiculous order that he will not release and do not align with public data. The positivity rate is going to be much higher, since the CDC ordered no one to be tested without symptoms. Less tests means higher positivity rate, simple math. There have been zero deaths of children 0 to 19 from COVID in Missouri, zero athlete-to-athlete transmissions in the state. The mental damage virtual school and no athletics is doing to our kids is irreparable. Every other county in the state is successfully mitigating the risks, and when an infection is confirmed, they deal with it. The kids testing positive are not getting it at school or practice because they are not there. End this ridiculous attack on our kids. If we follow your logic, children 19 and under shouldn't ride in cars, since that is a leading cause of death for those in that age group. Perhaps Dr., perhaps Dr. Page can make an order to stop teen suicide. Excuse me. He's going to need it. The assertion that 37 other states have moved to spring is false. Some areas in those states have, but not an overall sweeping move. Move that sports to the spring will deprive kids of scholarship opportunities and to participate in state playoffs and tournaments. That will also move spring sports to a later session, further depriving them of the same opportunities. The bottom line is you have no data to support your order. If you did, you would share it. You also needed to include 19-year-olds in your survey to capture the large number of college students being tested as they arrive on their campuses, so it fit your message. No one, no one unelected official should have the authority to hold an entire county under his dictatorship. I demand the council support bills 175 and 176 and take control back from Dr. Page. No more mandates. Let them go to school and let them play. And from Ed Golderman. Every decade, those who control St. Louis create another downtown plan. These plans fail. Through weak county officials, they are promised and receive hundreds of millions more from us. The outflow of $200 million in tax money a year into the city has severely weakened and is bankrupting the county. The commitment of nearly half a billion to the failed convention center last year is financially suicidal. Take a stand. Stop this. Win or lose, at least fight. Thank you.
Madam Chair, continuing. From Ben Sansom. Let them play. And at least let one parent watch. There's no reason why parent spectators should be banned for high-contact sports versus other sports. Parents on the sidelines are the same whether it's cross-country running, hockey, or football. Thank you, Ben Sansom. From Amy Bryant. Please provide data supporting your decision for the sports mandate. CDC recommends kids in school and playing sports. Your sports task force support, your sports task force supports kids returning to sports. 92 local pediatricians support kids in school and playing sports. Many states and neighboring counties are doing this safely and without cases. Zero cases of death for kids under age 19 in the state of Missouri. Show us proof to support your case. You are slowing. You are slowly, I'm gonna, I'm gonna edit here, slowly killing the mental and physical health of children throughout the county. Why, why don't you start looking at that data and listen to the CDC and pediatric community? Please reconsider, as many children's futures depend on it. I'm sorry, I'm getting messages. You guys can't hear me. Can you hear me? Okay, sorry. My name is Doug Stockenberg. I'm a St. Louis County resident and taxpayer, as well as the parent of two students in the Parkway School District. Specifically, I am writing to express my complete disagreement with County Executive Sam Page's improper attempts to keep St. Louis County schools closed to in-person instruction indefinitely. And second, my complete disagreement with Page's ridiculous executive order last week reporting to cancel most fall sports, but conveniently not the sport in which his own son participates. In short, these actions are a gross abuse of power and are not in the best interests of students or their parents, who are all suffering emotionally, intellectually, socially, physically, and in many other ways as a result. The decisions to resume in-person schooling and to have safe sports competition should be left to the individual school districts and informed parents. And Page's actions constitute unnecessary government overreach at its absolute worst, especially in light of the widespread opposition voiced by, voiced by St. Louis County residents recently. Page is also ignoring the many pediatricians and other medical doctors who overwhelmingly support kids resuming in-person school instruction and safe sports competition. Thus, Page is nothing more than a petty tyrant. He is placing his warped political agenda ahead of the best interests of our children, and his callousness to their overall well-being is utterly unforgivable. If some parents are concerned about the virus, they are free to keep their own kids out of school and sports. But the government must stop penalizing those students and families who deserve to make those informed choices. The St. Louis County Council to adopt substitute bills for bills number 175 and 176 is a vitally necessary check and balance on the unfettered power that Page believes he has over the residents of St. Louis County, none of whom elected him to this position. In closing, please do not forget this, that in this democratic country, the primary duty of government officials is to represent the will of the people, not ignore it, as King Page is clearly doing. The voters of St. Louis County are watching each of you intently. Your actions, or lack thereof, will have substantial, substantial consequences at the ballot box on November 3, 2020. From Karen Wessels. Are you, are you truly unaware that six-plus months of worldwide data, not to mention the recommendations of over 100 local pediatric specialists, clearly show that children 19 and under have a virtually non-existent risk of death or serious disease from COVID-19? The virus has not caused one death in a Missouri child from the ages of 0 to 19. But Sam Page is unilaterally killing the souls, dreams, physical and mental health of thousands. I urge the council members to prioritize the recommendations of pediatricians over one politician. Follow data over a dictator, and approve their resolution to limit Sam Page's unilateral and politically motivated power. I feel that the council should insist Lisa Clancy abstain from all future voting, especially on bill 175 and 176, due to a conflict of interest. Clearly, it is difficult for her to make a reasonable judgment when her brother is the campaign manager for Sam Page. In addition, her posts on social media indicate she cannot decipher and evaluate data and come to rational conclusion. Here's one of her posts from yesterday. In parentheses, remember the true statistics above, in parentheses, for those of you who may have missed it. Dated 9/14/2020, end quote. Data shows that young people are among the fastest-growing groups of COVID cases. Are you waiting for data of children getting sick and dying after exposure from playing sports? Which parents do you want to sacrifice? I'm sorry. Which parents do, do you want to sacrifice their children so that you have your data, end quote? The planet are you living on, Lisa? Council members, can you not see she's incapable of making a nonpartisan decision? I think we can all agree Lisa Clancy does not have the ability to scrutinize the data of what is happening in St. Louis County and balance the danger of COVID-19 with the mental health, educational, and social needs of the community she represents. Lisa Clancy has one order of business, not as to support Sam Page and his agenda for St. Louis, Missouri. An agenda that has nothing to do with what is best for the children, families, communities, or businesses of this area. Stand up for what is best, St. Louis, and vote for bill 175 and 176. The following from Debbie Bogar. In March, we heard flatten the curve. So our hospitals are not overwhelmed. We met that goal if the goalposts keep moving. There are many more issues surrounding our kids and families right now than just COVID-19. And I respectfully request that you consider the anxiety, depression, suicides, and obesity issues, for example, that are, that are resulting from restrictions currently in place. I also ask that you look at the stats for ages 15 to 17, so college students don't skew data related to high school. I believe that we would see that we can safely get our kids back in school and back to their activities. Please consider data from a variety of sources as you make your decisions, including the task force on youth sports, superintendents, activities directors, and parents. Dr. Page, I do not envy your position. Can you imagine how difficult these decisions are? The more people you listen to, though, the better the decisions are, and that's all we ask. The trickle-down effects of these restrictions are enormous and heartbreaking for our workers, students, athletes, and families. Two-income families are struggling for income and with their, and with their kids' education. The impact to the well-being of our people and to our economy will be felt for years to come. You did your part in setting the restrictions early on while we learned more about the virus. Now that we have more information, it is time for you to lift the restrictions and let our people do their part. Be responsible for themselves, their families, their businesses, their activities, and their schools. If the hospital, excuse me, if the hospitalization rates increase to a critical level, revisit this. But unless that happens, please allow our citizens to be responsible for themselves and their families again. For the council. When voting is done along party lines, it tells mayor council members to consider politics more important than the needs of their voters. I encourage you to consider bills 175 and 176, and to vote with your own minds and hearts and be representatives of your constituents rather than representatives of your party. That's why we elected you to represent us. No decision should be in the hands of a single person without checks and balances, and these bills address that issue for us in St. Louis County. These be, excuse me, these bills provide reasonable oversight, and I believe it would be unreasonable to withhold support. Thank you.
Next comment is from Beth Collins. I want my daughter to play her senior year high school volleyball season. We live in Lake St. Louis, and she attends school at Incarnate Word Academy in St. Louis County. They attend school on campus five days a week. They have been practicing volleyball since June safely with necessary measures and protocols in place. My senior needs this exposure for her college scholarships. She has coaches wanting to come watch her play. Her entire college opportunity relies on this. It makes no sense St. Charles County can play sports, but St. Louis County cannot. The numbers are not accurate. Let the parents and coaches decide what's best for their own children. Hashtag let them play. This is unfair to the core. This is unfair to the core. My daughter needs this. Sincerely, a fed-up parent who is tired of the politics. Next comment is from Shelley Powell. Vote yes for Bills 175 and 176. Our community needs more oversight of the county executive's actions related to the pandemic. I have two children. They're falling behind academically, gaining weight due to more sedentary days as they sit in front of a computer screen for seven to eight hours a day, and have bouts of sadness and depression due to the isolation. How is the CARES Act money being spent? What happened to the CARES Act Board? Why isn't the county following recommendations from the Sports Task Force? Knowing this task force isn't appointed by the council, it is a group of experts that are studying how best to meet the needs of our kids. Dr. Page makes vague statements like there's a very alarming positivity rate. What is that positivity rate? Has the council adequately studied what the positivity rate means? It's not the most appropriate metric. How are hospitalization rates and mortality rates being used to make decisions? What specific data proves kids being in school or doing sports is problematic? What happened to our goal to flatten the curve? Stop including nineteen-year-olds in the data. They're not in high school. We need more transparency and checks and balances. We need appropriate data with balanced metrics, not data to create fear and promote an agenda. The community is becoming much more educated about the data and is seeing through the narrative. Our kids are being put at risk for falling behind academically and suffering emotionally and physically due to isolation and sedentary lives because of county restrictions. Kids are being discriminated against. Our disadvantaged families are challenged with supporting school at home. Children with special needs aren't getting the services they need in person. Kids working to get scholarships may lose that opportunity as other counties' kids continue to play sports. Schools need to be open in person. Sports needs to be open for all kids. Follow the CDC guidelines for schools and sports. It all can be done safely. Our county economy is suffering due to the restrictions. Businesses are closing, and people are going outside the county to shop, eat, and play sports. How many businesses have closed? How much revenue is being lost? We're sitting by, watching other counties open and thrive. Madam Chair, that has been two hours of council comments.
Thank you, Chris, Lynn, and Diane. All right. With that, we will move to introduction of bills.
Bill Number 209, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $49,798.40 from the Missouri Veterans Commission, appropriating the same for support of veterans provided by the Department of Human Services, and authorizing the Director of the Department of Human Services to execute necessary documents. Bill Number 210, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $135,016 from the East-West Gateway Council of Governments, appropriating the same for support of the Critical Infrastructure Coordinator position at the St. Louis Fusion Center, and authorizing the Superintendent of Police to execute necessary documents. Bill Number 211, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept four grants in a combined amount of up to $731,350 from the Missouri Department of Public Safety, Division of Highway Safety, with the funds from two of the grants being subject to matching requirements, appropriating the same for support of various enforcement units within the Department of Police, and authorizing the Superintendent of Police to execute necessary documents. Bill Number 212, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Walton Gray, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a cost-share agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to provide for the county to contribute funds to support construction of improvements to Interstate 270 between Lindbergh Boulevard and Route 367 by the Missouri Department of Transportation. Bill Number 213, introduced by Councilmembers Days, Fitch, and Harder, an ordinance, amending ordinance number 27,772 by repealing and reenacting Section 1 and Section 5 pertaining to funds received pursuant to the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security CARES Bill Number 214, introduced by Councilmember Fitch, an ordinance authorizing St. Louis County, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds, Gray Eagle Distributors Project Series 2020, in a principal amount not to exceed $21,500,000 for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring and constructing an industrial development project in the county, approving a plan for the project, and authorizing the county executive and Director of Administration to enter into certain agreements and take certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds. Madam Chair, those are all the bills.
Thank you. We will proceed with perfection.
Bill Number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold Bill Number 20.
Bill Number 20 is held.
Bill Number 32, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Please hold Bill Number 32.
Bill Number 32 is held.
Bill Number 175, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 175, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder, an ordinance amending Title 7, Chapter 703, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974, as amended, St. Louis County Emergency Management Code by repealing and reenacting Section 7.03.070 pertaining to duties of the county executive during a state of emergency and state of emergency declarations due to a pandemic.
I move for the adoption of substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 175.
Second.
Madam Chair, discussion?
Yes, Councilman Trakus.
Thank you. Madam Chair, by now, each of us has received and I would hope read the memorandum from the county councillor's office concerning the, what amounts to nothing less than legal infirmities and frailties with Bill 176 and 175 and 176. So, at this point, I think I would ask that the motion be withdrawn, that Bills 175 and 176 be dropped, that new bills be introduced, that pass legal muster so that whatever this body considers and votes on is actually enforceable. It is clear, based on the opinion of the county councillor's office, that Bills 175 and 176, as written, have, as I said, many legal frailties and would be, if passed, unenforceable. As such, it makes no sense for this body to continue to consider it. So I would, again, finalize my comments by simply saying I think the proper course is to withdraw the motion, drop these bills, and ask the county councillor's office to draft bills that will pass legal scrutiny. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman Fitch.
Thank you. While I appreciate Councilman Trakus's arguments, we just received this, or at least I just received this, just a few minutes before our meeting started, and maybe it's a question for the county councillor's office. I thought that was sent to me. Was it sent to everyone on the council?
Councilman Fitch, yes, everyone received a copy.
Okay, so what time do you show that everyone received that?
They received them hours ago.
Hours ago?
Same time as you did.
Right before the meeting started.
Correct.
Okay. So, my issue with this is, is if you don't agree with the legislation, and the argument is, is there's a legal argument, again, remember who the legal argument comes from. It comes from Sam Page's county councillor's office. So, the county councillor herself is appointed by the county executive. They're the ones saying there's no legal basis to be able to proceed with this. We, as a council, can decide that that's not accurate, that's an opinion of theirs. So, that's my comments on this, and I would just say that we should have a vote on this, and if you don't feel like you can support it, then your vote will reflect that, and then we would go from there. That's my comments, Madam Chair.
Councilman Fitch, you just acknowledged that you received this legal opinion just moments before our meeting started. Were you planning on sharing that with the rest of the council prior to the vote?
Absolutely, if I have a chance to. You mean, well, no, that's why I just asked the question, did everybody else receive it? Now that I have the answer, no, I don't need to share it.
Okay. It appears, though, that you were going to urge, as you did, you were asking for a vote anyway, even though you acknowledge that perhaps at best, under your impression, you were the only one that even received that communication. So that's concerning to me in and of itself.
I appreciate it.
You know, Councilman Trakus's concerns about the enforceability of this ordinance, and I think fundamentally, it comes down to a question about whether or not the charter allows the county council to limit executive authority via ordinance, and I believe that the opinion of the councillor's office, and my own read, and perhaps Councilman Trakus's read too, as a lawyer, says that it doesn't. So I think there's some serious legal flaws with this, and we need to respect our county charter. Are there any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes, my days.
Yes, and I would also like to say that while we were on the meeting, at least while I was on the meeting and trying to get on the meeting, is when I received this information. So I have not had an opportunity to even look at this and have some opportunity to digest what is being said here. So I think that in itself is, should have been done prior to. This is not a new, I think the county councillor's office drafted this information. If there were issues with that, then perhaps they should have indicated that to us earlier than this, but it's difficult for me to listen to the people on this call who are doing comments to this body and try to read a legal opinion as well. So, I don't know where that puts everybody, but I think it's a bit disingenuous to send us something while we're in the middle of a meeting.
Madam Chair, may I address that?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Madam Chair, just for a timeline, just factual for everyone, we received the subbills from Councilman Fitch at the end of last week. We have spent time putting into this. It is a very complex legal issue, and while I regretted to not get to everyone prior to the meeting, I will remind everyone this is an early meeting, and we pushed it out as soon as we can because we wanted you to have that information. We did not send that memo without knowing that Councilman Fitch was going to include for the legislation packet for this week, so that's just the timeline and some facts for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Madam Chair, for me?
Yes, Councilman Trakus.
Just as an aside in response to Councilman Fitch's comments, I appreciate the fact that he's made the case for us now as to why this body needs its own lawyer, and perhaps going forward, we can consider a charter amendment to that effect. But until that happens, under the charter, our lawyer is in fact the county councillor's office, and their opinion is at least worthy of consideration. So at a minimum, both of these bills should be held pending review by council members so that they have time to digest.
Yes, Councilwoman Days.
Let me ask for a procedural, because I think this is on perfection. Is that correct?
It is correct, yes.
It is on perfection, so there will be another step past this point to address the issues that have been brought up by the county councillor. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Harder.
So, could you describe for those listening outside of this call, why you think and why your office thinks this bill, the way it's written, and 176 is not enforceable when all we're doing is changing an existing ordinance?
Councilman Harder, I appreciate your question. However, it would be inappropriate for me to give privileged and confidential attorney-client information in a public meeting, especially in open sessions such as this.
But you've communicated your opinion to the board, and that's a public document as well, correct?
Actually, it's not a public document. It's a privileged and confidential attorney-client communication, and is meant for your benefit as the council.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Trakus.
Thank you. I would finally add that, just as a reminder, this body not long ago reciprocously voted to give $173.5 million at once, and ceded its authority and oversight over those monies, and we're faced with a similar question now. I think that it is the proper course to, at a minimum, hold these bills until every member has had an opportunity to read the memo and draw their own conclusions. The fact that it's up for perfection is really secondary, if not tertiary. Simple fact of the matter is, we have an opinion that both bills are unenforceable as written, and have both legal problems with the charter and state law. So, I think the prudent course at this point is to defer any vote on adoption of the subbills or perfection until each member has satisfied themselves that they have had an opportunity to digest the legal opinion and now make an informed decision thereon. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, follow up?
Councilman Fitch.
Well, I appreciate the request to delay. We do have another full week to digest that information and make any other substitute bills, or withdraw them, or drop them, whatever it may be. I do believe that this is a strategy to delay this. I think we've heard enough from the public that they're very interested in getting this issue resolved as quickly as possible, and I think that we need to take this up today. And if you don't feel comfortable voting for it, vote no. That's how I feel. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
I saw Councilwoman Dunaway first, and then let me go to Councilwoman Dunaway, Councilwoman Days. So, yes, Councilwoman Dunaway.
So, I, you know, in looking at the legislation before getting the legal opinion today and the predecessor legislation, as I understand these two pieces of legislation, I'm being asked to give this council more authority in a future pandemic than the county executive, who normally would be elected, in part to lead in a time of crisis, and more authority than our Department of Public Health leaders. As I further see this, the representatives of the political party that has consistently downplayed the seriousness of the pandemic, mocked mitigation efforts as simple as wearing a mask, washing your hands, and maintaining social distance, now want us to believe that they should have an outsized voice in deciding how to proceed in a future public health crisis. Because I believe in science, respect the expertise of our public health and healthcare professionals, and recognize that we are in the middle of an actual global health crisis, a pandemic around the globe, not just here. This is not made up. I simply could not be more disgusted by the politicization of these mitigation efforts that could have and will continue to slow the spread of this virus. I think that we all need to really think about what these two bills are really about anyway, and I'm fine with Councilman Fitch's request to carry on with the vote today.
Councilwoman Days.
Thank you. Let me go back to the Council, Warwick's statement, and I believe, did she indicate that she gave this information to everyone on the council? Is that what you said, Beth?
Yes.
And so, if this was information for Councilman Fitch, does that not violate what you've just said about the confidentiality of that? If you gave it to everybody? I'm just asking the question, because it seems a little odd to me, that if this was directed to him, and then it would be given to everybody else, then I'm not following the attorney-client privilege here. I'm not following that, so help me here.
Correct. Now, he, Councilman Fitch, is in the legislative packet for today, so it is appropriate for all of you to know our legal opinion on this, as he has made it into the packet, is for consideration by everyone on the council. Therefore, it is important for everyone on the council to understand the ramification of a piece of legislation. Prior to something being introduced to the entire council, that would be a different situation where we work with someone. But the council is the client, and in this case, since the legislation was going to the entire council, it was important for everyone on the council to know that opinion.
So now, again, tell me what the attorney-client privilege statement that you just made. So now, again, tell me what the attorney-client privilege statement that you just made, what did that mean? You just indicated, I believe, to Councilman Harder, that you couldn't say anything because of attorney-client privilege. Did I not hear that right? I didn't hear that right, right?
I can't give, I'm not going to give a legal opinion in an open meeting. The county is my client. St. Louis County is the client of the county councillor's office. However, I'm not going to give a legal opinion in an open session meeting. That's what I was talking about before.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Tracus.
Just in response to Councilman Fitch's last comment, I think what the public wants, indeed, what the public expects and demands, is this body pass legislation that's legally enforceable, not legislation that's simply going to get rejected whenever it's challenged. So I think it's our duty to pass legislation, consider it passed legislation, that ultimately is going to be legally enforceable. Thank you.
And just a follow up to that?
Councilman Fitch.
And I would bet you that if we do some sort of sub or drop this and come up with two new bills, there will be continued arguments from the county councillor's office that it's not legal, we have no authority to do that. That's just the direction that we've headed with this entire conversation. So I don't know that it's going to make any difference by redrafting something that will work, because I think when you ask the county councillor, redraft something that will work, they're going to say, sorry, can't do it. You have no authority to change the county executive's emergencies or emergency orders, or the Department of Public Health, Public Health orders. Is that probably exactly going to be what their arguments can be, no matter what we change it to? So let's have the vote. Let's decide who thinks that we should move forward, and who thinks that we shouldn't, and let the public know.
Councilman Fitch, I disagree with that, because you will recall that the original version of this bill was as a charter amendment. There were no disputes from the county councillor's office about the legality of that. I'm curious about why you ended up not moving forward that way, and not only did not end up moving forward that way, but never called for a vote in the matter that you are today.
There was no legal opinion requested on that original legislation. That's why you didn't hear from the county councillor's office on that.
I talked to the county councillor's office about the legality of that, and it was not as questionable as what you are proposing today.
Did you share that with all of us?
It was a privileged communication. It didn't even involve an email.
Between you and the county councillor, or you and all of us and the county councillor?
Myself and the county councillor, in the same manner that you might speak with the county councillor's office.
So they gave...
So it appears, Mr. Fitch, Councilman Fitch, it appears that you are not willing to entertain a compromise to hold the bill as our colleagues are suggesting, and you would like to continue with your motion. So if that's the case, we can vote this up or down. Is there a second?
There already was.
Second round, Councilman Harder.
Yes.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Um, sorry, Councilman Harder? Did you say something?
I couldn't hear. I think we need to have a roll call.
Yes, I am aware. I am the chair of the meeting. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Nay.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
No.
Councilmember Clancy?
No.
Councilmember Tracus?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on the motion to adopt substitute bill number one for bill number 175, there are four noes and three ayes.
The motion fails. Substitute bill number one for bill number 175 fails to be perfected.
Bill number 176, introduced by councilmembers Fitch and Harder. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute.
Substitute bill number one for bill number 176, introduced by councilmembers Fitch and Harder. An ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter 600, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974, is amended Department of Public Health by repealing and reenacting Section 600.030 pertaining to the duties of the Director and Public Health Orders issued by the Director related to a pandemic.
I move for the adoption of substitute bill number one for bill 176.
Is there a second?
Yes, I said second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Roll call, please.
Member Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Nay.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
No.
Councilmember Clancy?
No.
Councilmember Tracus?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on the motion to adopt substitute bill number one for bill number 176, there are four noes and three ayes.
Substitute bill number one for bill number 176 fails to be perfected. I do believe that...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I think that was the motion to adopt it, not perfection.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
That's okay.
The motion fails to be adopted. So we will go back to adoption, or to perfection of bill number 176. Is that in order? Beth?
I think you need to go back to 175. 175 is on the perfection calendar. You addressed to the subbill number one. It was not the under...
That's right.
Addressing that perfection on that one.
Right.
Okay, so the options there would either be perfect, to perfect the bill as is, or to drop it.
Or hold it.
Or hold it. I will defer to the bill sponsors.
I will move to hold that original bill, 175, which is what we're discussing right now.
Bill number 175 is held. And then going back to bill number 176, substitute bill number, for bill number 176 failed to be adopted. We can go back now to bill number 176. How would you like to address that matter, Councilman Fitch and Councilman Harder?
I would also move to hold the original bill, 176, on the order of...
So ordered, bill number 176 is held.
Madam Chair, could I just have one last conversation? Is what I look forward to from members of the council, is if you're truly interested in having any oversight of the authority from the county executive and the Department of Public Health, that you provide some input, provide some comments on how it would work. If I hear nothing, I'm going to assume that you have no interest in doing that. So I'd be interested in hearing that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, Councilwoman Dunaway.
We do have an oversight committee, and we meet biweekly to go through the budget, where the money is being spent, where community leaders have shown us the money needs to be spent. And just because certain members of this council refuse to participate and engage in that process does not mean there is no oversight and no accountability that's happening with the CARES Act money.
This is not about a discussion about the CARES Act money. This is about oversight of states of emergency and oversight of public health orders, not oversight of the CARES Act money. Two different things. But thank you for your input, and I look forward to input from all of you that want to participate.
Yes, Councilman Tracus.
On the record that I am interested in and will vigorously support any legislation with respect to limiting executive power that is legally enforceable. But what I will not waste this body's time on is legislation that ultimately, if challenged, is going to fail in the courts. I think it's our duty to consider legally enforceable legislation and the subsequent ordinances that flow from that. Thank you.
All right, moving along.
Bill number 198, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
Um, we will be having a hearing about this bill. Hopefully, it will be scheduled later this week. So I will be holding bill number 198.
Bill number 205, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect bill number 205.
Second.
Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 205 is perfected.
Bill number 206, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect bill number 206.
Second, right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 206 is perfected.
Bill number 207, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect bill number 207.
Second.
Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 207 is perfected.
Bill number 208, introduced by councilmember Harder.
I've moved to perfect bill number 208.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 208 is perfected. Final passage.
Bill number 320, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold bill number 320. Bill number 320 is held.
Substitute bill number two for bill number 385, introduced by councilmember Dunaway.
I move to hold substitute bill number two for bill number 385.
Substitute bill number two for bill number 385 is held.
Bill number 14, introduced by councilmembers Tracus, Daze, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold bill number 14, please.
Bill number 14 is held.
Bill number 76, introduced by councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
I move to hold bill number 76. Bill number 76 is held.
Bill number 196, introduced by councilmember Daze.
I move for final passage of bill number 196.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Council... Member Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Gray.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 196, there are seven ayes.
Um, bill number 196 is finally passed.
Bill number 197, introduced by councilmember Daze.
I move for final passage of bill number 197.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill 197, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 197 is finally passed.
Bill number 199, introduced by councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of bill number 199, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 199, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 199 is finally passed.
Bill number 200, introduced by councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of bill number 200.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill 200, there are seven ayes.
Bill 200 is finally passed.
Bill number 201, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number 201.
Second, right.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray? There she is. Councilmember Gray?
Aye. Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 201, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 201 is finally passed.
Bill number 202, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
Um, I will hold this bill and refer it to the Committee of Revenue and Personnel for a hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Bill number 203, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
Um, I move for final passage of bill number 203.
Second, right.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 203, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 203 is finally passed.
Bill number 204, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number 204.
Second, right.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
And councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 204, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 204 is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions. Madam Chair, we have 25 resolutions this afternoon. Oh, resolutions one through 22 are introduced by councilmembers Daze, Dunaway, and Clancy.
I move for the adoption of resolutions number one through 22, please.
Second.
Um, Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilwoman Daze.
Thank you. And the reason for the numbers are, if you will look at the third page, these will be individually addressed to each of the members of this fellows program. So I won't have you to read each one of them with each name. So if you would be so kind as to read the resolution, please, I would appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Resolution. Whereas the Neighborhood Leadership Fellows Program, NLF, is an advanced leadership training program of creating whole communities, which is a collaboration of the University of Missouri, St. Louis, MU Extension, and the St. Louis Promise Zone, St. Louis Economic Development Partnership. And whereas the mission of NLF is to increase and amplify the voices of North St. Louis County and North St. Louis City residents at civic decision-making tables in order to produce more equitable regional policies for neighborhoods. And whereas 22 leaders from North St. Louis County and North St. Louis City, the fellows, were accepted for this nine-month fellowship out of a pool of nearly 100 applicants. And whereas the fellows selected, selected all reside in neighborhoods within the St. Louis Promise Zone, an area with a well-documented need for more targeted investment. And whereas the fellows are already utilizing the training they received to serve on regional and local boards and commissions, to seek elected office, and to work in teams to develop solutions for the issues facing the North St. Louis region. And whereas... for the issues facing the North St. Louis region, and whereas the NLF graduation ceremony was held virtually on Saturday, September 12, 2020, at which time each fellow will receive a University of Missouri-St. Louis Chancellor's Certificate in Civic Leadership, and whereas the 22 fellows is each of the 22 fellows is one of the talented and dedicated fellows who graduated from the NLF program on September 12, 2020. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows, the County Council congratulates all 23 fellows upon the occasion of graduation from the Neighborhood Leadership Fellows Program and looks forward to hearing more about efforts to further the NLF's mission going forward. Section 2, the Acting Administrative Director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to all 22 fellows as a token of the council's esteem and gratitude for their hard work and commitment to create a more equitable community for all.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, thank you Diane for that, and I renew my motion.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolutions one through 22, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number one is adopted.
Resolution, that's resolution one through 22, moving on to resolution number-
One through 22.
Yes ma'am, moving on to resolution number 23 introduced by Councilmembers Clancy, Dunaway, Walton Gray and Tracus.
Please read the resolution.
Yes ma'am. Resolution, whereas the University City Children's Center, UCCC, is a nonprofit organization that has for 50 years provided a safe and nurturing environment where children from different socioeconomic, ethnic and cultural backgrounds can learn and play together in an atmosphere that is respectful of diversity and individuality, and whereas the UCCC was founded in 1970 by a group of nine community synagogues and churches and originally served 28 children, and whereas in 1985, the UCCC became only the second early childhood center in the state of Missouri to achieve accreditation by the Missouri Board of Voluntary Accreditation of Early Childhood Programs, and whereas today, the UCCC serves 164 children and their families in a culture based on the UCCC's cornerstone values of trust, love, empathy, compassion and joy, and whereas in 2020, the UCCC is celebrating its 50th anniversary as a keystone of the early childhood care community and as a thought leader in early childhood education and human development, and whereas it is fitting that the St. Louis County Council recognized the UCCC on the occasion of the 50th anniversary of its founding as well as the important role it plays in the lives of the children enrolled there and their families and to the wider community. Now therefore-
You may stop there Diane, thank you.
You're welcome.
I move for adoption of resolution number 23.
Second, right.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Gray.
I'm getting bad exceptions, sorry.
Thank you. Got it, Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill, I mean on resolution 23, there are seven ayes.
Resolution 23 is adopted.
Resolution 24 introduced by Councilmembers Clancy, Daze, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Tracus and Harder.
Please read the resolution.
Resolution, whereas the Reverend Dr. Starsky Wilson has for many years served the St. Louis community as a bold leader, a devoted pastor and a powerful advocate for children and for social and racial justice, and whereas Dr. Wilson has served the community as the President and CEO of the Deaconess Foundation, the Co-Chair of the Ferguson Commission, the Pastor of St. John's United Church of Christ, the beloved community, and as the Board Chair for the National Committee for Responsive Philanthropy, philanthropy, excuse me, among numerous other roles, and whereas as President and CEO of the Faith-Based Deaconess Foundation, Dr. Wilson supported child well-being in St. Louis through philanthropy, advocacy and advocating for racial equality and public policy change, and whereas the Children's Defense Fund, founded in 1973 by Marion Wright Edelman, is a nonprofit organization that advocates powerfully at the national level for the interests of children, particularly poor children, children of color and those with disabilities, and whereas it has been announced that Dr. Wilson is joining the Children's Defense Fund in Washington DC as President and CEO of that organization, and in that capacity, his knowledge, talent and passion for advocacy will undoubtedly be an asset for children across the United States, and whereas it is fitting that the St. Louis County Council recognized the important work and effective advocacy of Dr. Wilson, which has unquestionably improved countless lives in the St. Louis community, especially the lives of vulnerable children. Would you like me to continue?
That's, you can stop there Diane, thank you.
Okay.
I move for adoption of resolution number 24.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze. Are you on mute?
Sorry, aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution 24, there are seven ayes.
Resolution 24 is adopted.
Our last resolution this evening, this afternoon, resolution 25 introduced by Councilmembers Harder and Fitch.
Diane, I know this is a lengthy resolution with a lot of good information in it, but you can just read the highlighted paragraphs since we're running late.
Yes sir.
If you would, thank you.
Resolution, whereas the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, report entitled "The Importance of Reopening America's Schools This Fall," as updated on July 23, 2020, states, and I quote, "The harms attributed to closed schools on the social, emotional and behavioral health, economic well-being and academic achievement of children in both the short and long term are well-known and significant, and whereas the National Academies of Sciences, Engineering and Medicine have urged school districts to prioritize safely reopening schools full-time, especially for kindergarten through grade five and for students with special needs, and whereas a study conducted by UCLA and Stanford University looked at the most currently available data on COVID infections and concluded, quote, "The virus is 10 times less fatal than we first thought, the vast majority who catch it will have mild or no symptoms, children are largely spared," end quote, and according to the study, the chances of a healthy 50 to 64-year-old of dying from COVID-19 after a single random contact are 1 in 19.1 million, and whereas a study from National Center for Immunization Research and Study from April 2020 shows that there have been, quote, "Few reports of children being the primary source of COVID-19 transmission among family members," end quote, implying that spikes in positive cases among students is not likely to lead to infection clusters in school communities, and now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the County Council urges the County Executive and the St. Louis County Department of Public Health to encourage all elementary schools in the county to resume in-person instruction post-haste. Section 2, the County Council encourages all governing bodies for schools within St. Louis County to resume in-person instruction in their respective schools and school districts for grades K through 5 post-haste. Section 3, the County Council demands the County Executive and the St. Louis County Department of Public Health establish and publish clear attainable targets for when middle and high school in-person instruction should resume. Section 4, the County Council urges the County Executive and the St. Louis County Department of Public Health to allow all four sports to continue with all the preventative guidelines currently in place, i.e. school, social distancing, when possible, frequent handwashing. Section 5, the Acting Administrative Director shall send certified copies of this resolution to the County Executive, the Acting Director of the Department of Public Health, the governing boards of all public school districts, and the governing entities of all identifiable private schools in St. Louis County which offer K through 5 education.
Thank you Diane.
You're welcome.
I move for adoption of resolution 25.
Second.
Before we take a vote, I wanted to make a few remarks before I cast my vote at least. You know, I had some conversations with our Health Department and I've had some conversations with some of the school leaders in my district. Our Health Department shared with my office yesterday that there's not currently a Department of Public Health or County Executive order that says that schools should be opened or closed, rather they have said that schools can decide for themselves, and they have been offering recommendations so that schools can reopen safely. I'm also concerned because there are several private schools within my district that have reopened, elementary schools that have had to close and quarantine because there have been cases, and as I talked to school officials in my district, they stressed to me that what's most helpful for them right now is not a recommendation to reopen, but more financial support to be able to do so with safe conditions for reopening, as well as more stringent public health measures, again, to slow the spread of COVID. So because of those reasons, I will be voting no. Any other comments from anyone?
Yes, I was also taken aback when I hear that people blame the County Executive for school closings, being a former legislator, I'm aware, fully aware that DSC has the authority over our school districts and primarily our local school districts make decisions for themselves, we try to, one of the things about the legislature and our legislators is that we, especially in our rural areas, they want to continue to have local control over their school districts, and they don't really want us to interfere with that, which again, we couldn't at our level, and the state level was not done very often, so I echo what the Chair said, and I didn't call to clarify, but she's told me she hasn't, again, I thought that was the case, she just confirms what I thought I already knew.
Madam Chair, can I respond to that?
Councilman Harder.
Both to those issues, if you look in section under therefore's, what I'm asking for is for the Department of Health and the County Executive to encourage schools to open up, because initially they were discouraging schools to open up, so I'm asking for them to encourage them, leave it up to the school districts, the school districts and their elected boards will be the decision-makers in a lot of this, so this is just to give them some clear choices and to say, here's our encouragement to open up, or if they choose to stay closed, they'll stay closed. Also, I think what's key about this is that the targets keep moving, and I would like the Health Department to come up with clear targets for middle school and high school that says what will close the school and what will keep a school open, and I think there's a lot of confusion over that with a lot of school districts, both private and public out there, of what is healthy and what isn't based on the targets that the Health Department has come up with, so this is just to encourage these things to happen and to better clarify some of these particulars that have been thrown around for the last couple of months, that's what this resolution does.
I understand, there's a lot in your resolution, Councilman Harder, you cover a lot of ground, you know, I would maybe consider a resolution that separates out the piece about targets, but I don't think your resolution does enough to actually support school districts in safely reopening, so I will maintain my vote against it. Any other comments from the council? All right, we will take our vote, did I hear a second? I believe I did.
Yes.
Okay, from Councilman Fitch, roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
No.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye, and again, I'm losing, again with, so I think I hear you, but aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
No.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Let me go back, I'm a no on that, again, I'm losing, I'm going in and out, I'm a no.
Councilwoman Gray, you want to change your vote from yes to no on the resolution? Did I hear you correctly?
Yes.
And Councilman Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution 25, there are four ayes and three noes.
Resolution number 25 is adopted. Moving on to unfinished, moving on to unfinished business.
Item number one.
Hold on the order of business and that will be the order.
Item number two.
There has been much discussion about this item among the council over the past two or three weeks that this has been on our agenda, we were not able to come to a compromise, so the item that is on our agenda reflects, continues to reflect where we are right now for either an up or down vote, so I will move that the amendment to the contract be approved as requested.
Second.
Discussion?
Councilman Fitch.
Madam Chair, for those out there, this is the Lewis Rice Amendment to the contract to have the county, have Lewis Rice represent the county in the case versus Lieutenant Colonel Troy Doyle, I want to reiterate my objection from in the past that this is one of those blank checks that we would be giving to the County Counselor's Office with no cap, I'm not against outside counsel, but what I am against is just giving a blank check, so I will be voting no on this.
Any further comment?
I have a question.
Councilman Harder.
Last week, we talked about some type of cap or some kind of graduated cap, and I think Councilman Tracus had an idea about how to do that, was that ever considered? Are we, is that discussion over with?
Happy to respond to that, Madam Chair.
Councilman Tracus.
Thank you, this is without a doubt a very difficult question, I don't think anyone here takes it lightly, legal fees are exorbitant in almost every instance, but we ask the people on county boards and commissions to serve voluntarily, they put up with a lot, there's a lot of pressure, especially on the Board of Police Commissioners, they have to attend committee hearings, be grilled by people like me, they volunteer their time and lend their good name to the county for all the good of their community, as I said, one of the most prominent boards is the Board of Police Commissioners, there's a lot of scrutiny there, there's a lot of lawsuits and disputes, but the problem with putting a cap, I've come to the conclusion that the problem with putting a cap for graduated limits with attorney on retainer agreement, is that it will be exploited by the attorneys for the plaintiffs in every instance, they will delay, obfuscate, file, pleading after pleading to eat up- They will delay, obfuscate, file, pleading after pleading to eat up time and/or money to put the council in a situation, the county in a situation where their lawyers are prevented from acting. This body owes it to the Board of Police Commissioners, and in fact, to St. Louis County, to provide the best counsel available to provide an aggressive, vigorous defense of the charges in this case and any other cases that are brought. And so I think it's time we put politics aside on this and vote unanimously to approve the requested amendment and allow the Board of Police Commissioners and through them, the county, to obtain appropriate, experienced, and aggressive counsel to defend these allegations. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Tracus. I agree taxpayers are going to pay for this either way, no matter if we have outside counsel or not. You know, after wrestling with this and grappling with this for several weeks, I think that we owe it to the taxpayers of St. Louis County to defend this or to have representation in this case that is as strong as possible so that we can mitigate the ultimate cost to taxpayers. And so that's why I will be supporting it. But it's a difficult decision, and it's not one that I take lightly. All right. With that, we will take our vote. I believe I heard a second. Can you remind me, Diane?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days. Councilmember Days.
You're on mute.
Am I still on mute?
You're not anymore.
We can hear you now.
Okay. No.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Without some kind of cap or oversight, I have to vote no.
Madam Chair, on unfinished business item number two, to approve the amendment to the contract, there are four ayes and three noes.
The motion carries.
Moving on to unfinished business item number three.
Receive, file, and the appointment be approved as recommended. This is our appointment of Dr. Gerard Hollins to the position of Director of the Department of Revenue. We had our hearing last week, I believe, and so, again, I would make a motion to approve the appointment as recommended. There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
No.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on the motion to approve Gerard Hollins, there are five ayes and two noes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item number four.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number five.
This is for the appointment of Chuck Henderson to the Director of the Department of Information Technology. We had a hearing earlier today. I move that we receive, file, and the appointment be approved as recommended.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Days.
I will be abstaining, as you knew earlier, I was having technical difficulties with my system here, and so I was not able to participate in the full hearing with Chuck. I'm sure he'll be all right, but I will have to abstain from that vote. Thank you.
Okay. Noted. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Abstain.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Madam Chair, on the appointment of Chuck Henderson, there are five ayes, one no, and one abstention.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item number six.
This is for the appointment of Courtney Whiteside to the Director of the St. Louis County Municipal Court and County Municipal Court Administrator. I would like to receive, file, and the appointment be approved as recommended. We also did have a hearing with Ms. Whiteside earlier this afternoon.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstention, Madam Chair, please. Again, same reason as earlier, I did not hear her, was not participating in that at all, so there's one abstention, please.
All right.
I'm an aye, Madam Chair.
Okay. I don't think I heard any ayes. Did I hear any ayes? Okay, motion carries.
Okay, moving on to new business, we have two prepared orders this evening. The first order, number one, is in the matter of the request to the records manager for permission to destroy certain books, papers, and records of the Office of the Assessor and the Department of Police.
I move for the adoption of order number one.
Second, Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Order number one is adopted.
And prepared order number two is in the matter of appointment of Dr. Gerard W. Hollins, Jr., Director of Revenue, as trustee for the benefit of all taxing authorities entitled to participate in real estate sales for delinquent taxes.
I move for the adoption of order number two.
Second, Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Order number two is adopted. Is that our final order for the meeting?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, that's correct. We had two. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. It's been a long meeting. All right. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Any further discussion from the council before we move for adjournment?
Maybe just some clarification for those waiting for the Justice, Health, and Welfare meeting that was supposed to start at four. So is there any instruction on that from the chairwoman of the committee?
Yes, I think a lot of us need a break, so we will start 10 minutes, 4:45.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Have a good afternoon, everybody. Thank you.
You as well.